Thirty, let's call this study session to order on September 23rd. We've got four items to discuss today. We'll start off with Geneva Village Property Technical Advisory Panel Report. It runs from ULI here and City Manager Dave kicks off.
Thanks Mayor. Good evening, members of the council, and good evening and thank you to our guests from the ULI TAP panel. We're very grateful that you're back with us and also say again grateful for your help with this process. I'm just gonna start off by reminding the council and the public that this process was very interesting, engaging, and dynamic, and it is brainstorming for us. It's intended to help us to generate ideas. It's by no means a plan yet. There will be lots of planning, there will be lots of planning and visioning with the community and the council in the future. And so I just want to kind of start with that context that I will turn over to our Deputy City Manager Kathleen Osher, who I want to thank first for leading this process for the city along with Julie Latham, and ask Kathleen to introduce our guests and perhaps add a little more context for the process.
Yes, so we've been working on this for a few years and had some different components to Geneva Village. So I guess it was probably about two or three years ago that we came to council and suggested the idea of a technical advisory panel and that that might be helpful in sort of brainstorming some of those next steps. And so we were super fortunate to both apply for that program and then also receive a grant from the Denver Regional Council of Governments that helped offset some of the costs associated with that. So Julie Latham, our Housing Policy Analyst, kind of took the lead on putting that application together. I know that Julie and I are spending some time with you talking about housing, so we're really gonna provide most of this time for the panel. Anything you want to add, though, before I introduce them? Okay. So you may all remember a few of the panelists that were with us, and I know for many of you were able to join for dinner as part of that and engage in some conversation and priorities that the council have for the site. And so Rodney Milton, the Executive Director of Urban Land Institute, is back with us tonight, so he'll be a familiar face, as is James Atchison, that was the Chair of the panel itself, and then Sarah Dunmire with EPS, and Chris Gillies with Quatera, also a resident of Littleton, right? So it brings some rich local context to you. So I'm gonna turn it over to Rodney to get us started and kind of just remind you a little bit about Urban Land Institute, this process of technical advisory panels, and then we'll kind of roll into really the highlights and sort of high-level takeaways from the report.
And Kim's back there, too.
Yes. We do have the Chair for the Urban Land Institute, Kim Sperry, in the back as well. So thanks for joining us, Kim.
So again, as Kathleen mentioned, I'm Rodney Milton, Executive Director of the Urban Land Institute of Colorado. I'm gonna be extraordinarily brief with my time because I wanted to be taken on the panelist, but we thank you all for inviting us to this conversation. Generally speaking, ULI is a multidisciplinary organization of members, and we've got about 1,400 members throughout the state, 47,000 globally, which means it's a lot of brain power to be answering a question within Littleton that we were hoping to achieve. And so our technical advisory panels is how we show up for our local communities. We partner with Dr. Cog to fund a lot of these initiatives, but we've been doing this for a long time. I think ULI Colorado is in its 26th, maybe 27th year, and we've got about 70 technical advisory panels. If you notice, I'm using no acronyms. I'm really trying to do about that. But our technical advisory panels, our TAP panels, are really an extraordinary way of getting into community, helping you brainstorm with some folks that are just absolutely excellent and do this work. They are volunteers, so while the process itself does have a cost associated with it, no one on this panel got paid. They got fed and applied with Red Bull, but they weren't paid, so I just want to make sure that you understand that. Our client, obviously, is the City of Littleton, Fleishy. Thank you so much for inviting us to your community and hopefully that we'll stay. Over the course of those two to three days that we convened, we were able to connect with a fair amount of stakeholders in your community. I am a city planner by trade, so I want to make the distinction of this kind of approach versus other planning efforts. So this is not like your comprehensive plan or neighborhood plan where you spend a lot of time in community, engage with folks. This is a little bit different. This is a higher-level, really brainstorming session that kicks off catalytic things that you should be thinking about, and so I always want to say that. These are the stakeholders that gave us our time and effort over the course of the other couple of days. As Kathleen mentioned, these are our panelists. We don't have all of our panelists tonight, but we have a few esteemed of our panelists. Our technical writer was Deborah Meyerson, and on my team it was Hannah King that was the Director for that. And so I will turn it over to James.
Yes.
To go over those TAP questions and stuff.
Okay. So we, when we last presented this, it was a little bit fuller presentation, so this is a little bit more condensed, just so that we can get to the question-answer portion. So we wanted to just quickly review what the study area was. So you could see that essentially it's the northern gateway along Prince Street with the light rail lines on the east side and then Santa Fe Drive on the west side, and then above the Arapahoe County Building on the north, and then essentially where we're at right now, Berry Avenue on the south. And so we broke up the study area into three core areas. Core Area 1 is specifically Geneva Village proper, which is that 2.8 acres that we have. Core Area 2 was other city-owned parcels within the vicinity, and then Core Area 3 was looking at, okay, so how do we make this a larger district and tie everything together? And so some of the questions that we were asked were, you know, what can we do with this property? What's the best way to essentially weave Littleton's historic history with where it wants to be with its culture and its vibrant community? And then how can we foster some sort of economic impact to help bolster the prosperity and innovation and sustainable growth? So when we looked at this, we really tried to kind of take an organizing feature and then also layer in the preservation and reuse of either what's on Geneva Village proper or looking at it as its history, which was a working establishment for old chefs that have been retired, so it was kind of this working-class community. So how do we make this, you know, kind of pay homage to that with this working neighborhood? And then leverage our city-owned properties, really create this gateway, this northern gateway to downtown Littleton, and then improve Prince Street because that's a large north-south connector, and then looking at what can we possibly do with Solar House Gulch? And so implementing the vision here. So we've got to start somewhere. So we decided to start with Geneva Village as the catalyst for the larger change for this area. And so how we approach that is when we look at this property, we really want to create something that seems authentic to the community, but also kind of has this resonance that it's essentially Littleton, but just not the downtown Littleton that everybody's familiar with. And so we had a list of approaches that we could go into in detail, but essentially what we wanted to do is really play into the history of the site because there was so much there to play off of, and then look at how can we weave in some of the arts and culture that has this undercurrent. And a lot of these decisions that we made were kind of pushed in certain directions with the interviews that we did. So it wasn't like we came cold into this. We really were listening to what some of the stakeholders had to say, and that drove some of these decisions that we made. So looking at different ways that we can include public art and emphasize kind of that art culture that we have here, but also keeping with this urban-downtown mixed-use scale that we have, because everybody's familiar with what downtown Littleton looks like. We don't want it to look like a whole bunch of high-rises in the northern gateway. And so the plan that you see here, the sketch plan, is really based on a new public plaza, because that was something that in our discussions seemed to be a good idea with the community because it gives an opportunity for the city to have a large open space that they could hold events, and then anchor it with different types of mixed use and also provide a variety of different residential housing around it. And then looking larger, once the catalyst project is done, how can we look at adjacent properties to really kind of add to the campus feel or this collective feel? And so we don't want to remove any buildings, and this is just kind of ideas of what is there. So we looked at, you know, we got Arapahoe, we got the Littleton building. It's really civic-focused, so play into the civic idea, and how can we make a civic campus on here, and that could be that overarching gateway moment? And so looking at ways to include other mixed-use developments and then really look into how we can play with a lot of the existing open space. And then some of the bigger ideas was, you know, could we look at some of these existing retail properties and maybe unearth the gulches there and create a moment or a unique retail possibility where you have patios and shops facing a green space instead of a parking lot potentially?
So with all of that visioning, we also looked at how do we fund this? So looking at the tools Littleton already has and being able to use them is really important. So the Littleton established the Downtown Development Authority a couple of years ago where this area is already a part of it. So that is a great asset and a great tool that can help fund a lot of the infrastructure needs and redevelopment for the site. So specifically, tax increment financing can be used, and this can come from property tax as well as sales tax from the site. So the property tax, and able to generate tax increment financing revenue, it does need to be held by a private entity, so it can't be a non-tax owner. So that is one key recommendation to think about, that the site will need to be sold to a private entity in order to generate property tax increment. Additionally, sales tax increment can be generated from new retail on the site, as James mentioned. I believe we also talked about the lodge turning into a boutique hotel. So then lodging tax from the boutique hotel would also be TIF-eligible. So this revenue then can support the visions for the site and really help with infrastructure needs and redevelopment and really kind of create this vision and bring it to life. It can also then, since it's within the DDA, can also be spent and used in other areas within the DDA as well. So with that, another key recommendation is establishing a public-private partnership. This is really important because first off, it will minimize the risk for the city. It will also leverage the expertise of the private sector. You know, this is really what they do. And it can also be really mutually beneficial by creating a strong development agreement that defines exactly what the developer obligations are and what the city's requesting. So specific land uses, affordability requirements, things like that. Also, specific infrastructure development can be included in that development agreement. Some other options to consider, this gets a little detailed for the Core Areas 2 and 3, thinking about that kind of civic center campus that James mentioned. So there are kind of options to consider with this. One is, you know, selling the current city hall to a developer and using that money to then develop a shared municipal facility with the Arapahoe County site and hiring a fee developer. There's also options to sell the property to a developer, have them develop a shared municipal facility, and then have that be leased back to the city. And that would also include the first right of refusal with that agreement. And then Option 3 is establishing a public-private partnership where the developers create a newer, smaller city hall onsite and then redeveloping other portions of the site as well. So some different options to consider for that larger vision. With this project, incentives and subsidies are going to be required, so land is a really key piece of that, and that's a lot of leverage that the city has to encourage and support the vision of what they want to see happen on the site. Also, tax increment financing, as I mentioned, can be used to find gap financing to support specific development and visions that the city would like to see, and also support public improvements and infrastructure as well. Littleton also has an economic partnership incentive policy that can be used to support kind of innocent advice retail as well as revitalization. And then also low-interest loans could be provided by the city to encourage specific tenants and uses that are wanted for the site. Another key recommendation is bonding. I know Littleton hasn't done bonding in the past, but this is a way to get upfront money, and it can be based on the TIF revenue, based on projections for redevelopment of the site, having that money upfront to then fund the required infrastructure and support redevelopment. So definitely something to consider. Also, with that, it is recommended, I know last time we were working on this, I think you were kind of working on IGA with a school district to have the DDA collect the school district mills as part of the TIF revenue, so that would certainly be encouraged to increase the revenue that could be generated from the redevelopment of the site. Also, if bonding, you know, 10, 20 years is too much and too ambitious, you can also consider a line of credit where you're really just bonding over three to five years and then having that to fund some smaller infrastructure projects upfront. Other tools to consider are Metro District, General Improvement District, and Certificate of Participation. These are other options that could also help support infrastructure and specific redevelopment of the site as well.
So we wanted to kind of round things out with the ideas, some of the functions related to financing, to next steps, more or less, for the city to consider. That's what we call that implementation of whatever plan is developed. Yeah, and it comes down to stewardship. Since the city owns this land, and we're kind of talking about the parcel of land that the city actually owns, the other parcels that are outside of those boundaries, like the Arapahoe County area and the land to the west, those are more planning efforts since they're not really owned by the city, doesn't have direct control over that. So we're kind of talking about the land here that's under immediate ownership of the owners or of the city. The stakeholders that we spoke with believe the site should be redeveloped primarily in the housing. That was the biggest, most common feedback that we received from them. It includes an array of options such as market rate rentals and/or owned homes, which is what some of our planning showed, planning exercise showed, along with some attainable slash workforce development. Other usage ideas included public spaces, which we talked about, amphitheater, outdoor concerts, and common areas. There was also some discussion related to retail, but it wasn't, didn't seem to be as common a theme as housing. And they didn't, nobody wanted anything that would really kind of draw away from downtown, which is obviously valuable to everybody who visits and also those of us who live We think there needs to be some project champions, people who will consistently work on this site and this project over time. We understand, given that it is a public arena, there's going to be a changeover with regards to council and positions in that area, so there needs to be some consistency, something for the city to consider as they work on a plan to develop the site. What is the city's role? Well, obviously, as the city, as the owner, it plays a huge role. It's not just the group that's going to oversee what happens to the site, but is also going to be part of the decision-making as to how it gets developed, who develops it, how it gets financed, plays a major role as the owner. And with that, it has a couple of options that Sarah had mentioned. You could partner with a developer to help come up with these solutions, or flat-out sell the land to a developer who can take the process over. The city would obviously be involved from an entitlements process, but more or less the private market would take over and develop the land. And with that, as far as the next steps are concerned, we thought a good idea to help bring in outside ideas from the market, from an implementation standpoint, is an RFP process, RFQ process. And this would be handled in coordination with the city and a group who could handle the process from outside the city to solicit ideas from the market, from developers who are experts in developing multi-use types of properties like this, to help consolidate some ideas and to help bring brass tacks to these visions that we've been talking about. We think that would be a very good step if the city is really interested in moving forward over in the near future to help bring some actual practicality to the visions that we're talking about. Urgency of timeline, obviously, the site's not going to, particularly the buildings that are there that are vacant, they're going to continue to deteriorate. Costs of constructions are going to continue to rise. So as time goes on, these become a bigger and bigger factor, should the city want to actively pursue a development, redevelopment of the site. We put together a little timeframe, you know, and this is off of our experience, obviously, as developers. I'm developing a site here in Littleton now, the old Columbine Square site, kind of drew some of the timeline off of that process. So, but more or less, if we come up with a plan at this point in the near future with an RFP process, figure a year for that, another six months to negotiate a purchase agreement with whomever the city decides on partnering with or selling the site to a developer, two to three years for the entitlements process, and then another three years for construction. So even now, if you started right now, six years, more or less, to bring a plan to reality. Public engagement, obviously, very important. I think the city's been doing a great job of reaching out to groups like us and getting and soliciting opinions from the constituents. That would be a continual process as this, as it develops. So obviously, it kind of goes without saying that engagement is very important. That's what we have.
There is a companion report, so this is the presentation. The report goes into details about assumptions, about a variety of things, so.
Questions, council?
Sure. Thank you very much, really appreciate all your time and helping us with the city. I think, Sarah, you had a slide where you talked about that this will definitely require subsidies and incentives, and it's very clear to me the thing that there's infrastructure that needs to be built, but what are the things that you think we need to subsidize? The big things that need subsidies and incentives of the proposal?
Specifically, probably the affordable housing component. You know, development is hard right now, especially affordable housing, so depending on what AMI level you're looking at targeting for that, that will likely need maybe some support from the city for that. Also, depending on what types of, for the retail components, kind of tenant uses you're looking for, they could need subsidized or maybe funding some of the tenant improvements and fit-outs for those, depending on if you're targeting like some really local kind of restaurants or something like that, is something to consider, too. And then also just a lot of the open space improvements would be another one.
But the open, correct me if I'm wrong, the open space improvements are kind of infrastructure development, and if we sold it, then we would have to subsidize the developer in doing that, or if we retained it, then we'd use our own funds for that infrastructure. I just, that's what my brain is thinking of. There's a lot of infrastructure, the open spaces and infrastructure. I'm very excited about the kind of revitalizing the gulch, which is infrastructure. Those two parts, I understand, would be our investment, so.
Yeah, from a development perspective, anything that has kind of a public access to it, the expectation would be that the city would help out.
Give me some examples.
Well, like, say housing was built, but it's surrounding an area that has public access.
What, the plaza that you're talking about?
Like the plaza, exactly. So not only the residents can enjoy that plaza, but it's open to the public and their public concerts, that kind of thing. The developer would probably expect some contribution.
Great, thank you.
Was there any discussion around subdividing that parcel at all, selling it to different investors, developers?
You mean the non?
Just the Geneva Village, right.
If I recall, it's around three acres.
It's pretty small.
It's not very, it's not very big, so we didn't have a ton of discussion.
My thought is, you know, with the cost of development right now, taking on a small project might be more feasible than taking on one big project, you know, with two different entities.
It could be a combination of developers, especially if they have different specialties, like one more focused on housing, one more on mixed use.
Yeah, and that's something that the RFP process could flush out. You may get a mix of smaller developers looking for it here. You may get a larger developer saying, we'll subdivide it and plant it and sell these things off, but we can do the whole master plan ourselves. So there's some options there. But to Sarah's point, it's not a very big piece. Three acres is, a developer could develop that into one use easily, just given the size.
I guess this is more of a question for our staff. In terms of capacity, I know we didn't have, like, strong recommendations on what those next steps would be, but like, I think the timeline that you laid out, a couple of years for entitlements, things of that nature, like, there's, we've got years ahead of us, and, you know, we, I think, have put forth a kind of a heroic effort to make sure that the site is ready to be worked on. And what is the, I guess, what is our internal capacity to manage something like that? I mean, you know, obviously, an RFP and RFQ process does seem like a good fit to figure out at least what our options are, who's willing to play in this market space, but I think this, well, the coming council will probably want to have a hand in what that looks like and some of the requirements about it. So what are our thoughts in terms of those next steps and timeline?
I'll ask Kathleen to speak to the work that we anticipated for 2027, 2026, sorry.
Before you get that, I gotta piggyback off what he says, you know, walk into our partners, and I know what he said.
our partners, and I know when you look at just the Geneva Village site, the twenty acres is not, you know, maybe the, the best way to do it is if you look at the entire tier one and tier two as a combined site, that's probably more strategic. I'm sure that you'll talk about, talking to our.
Yes. Well, I think, you know, just, one thing I want to make sure that we have contextually is that so much of how we went into this process was really influenced by previous planning, right? So everything from the comprehensive plan, the priority that the community set on, on downtown, our comprehensive economic development strategy and some of the needs surrounding that, as well as the plan of development. So the plan of development for the Downtown Development Authority really serves as that overarching vision, and that's really where we, we hearken that idea of gateways. And so as we look forward to some of those next steps, I think in 2026, I mean, we've just gone through budget, right? So, so where we're positioned is, one, to be able to work, Chris has offered some assistance as well as added some expertise, we've had other folks reach out to us and offer that. So we're going through a process of understanding from, from them, what would be incorporated into an RFP. So really kind of getting a better sense of what our needs would be and kind of do that across a variety of different folks. And then we have planning processes that are embedded in our 2026 work plan, that I think are going to influence how we move forward with Geneva Village. The ones that I would call out are the facilities master plan, our capital planning exercise and sort of how we're moving forward with our debt policy, where we're prioritizing things, how we're thinking through what we fund with those. I think also our transportation master plan, because, you know, to the activation of the gulch, that connection back across to the Mary Carter Greenway, as well as some of those other improvements. So I do think that there are going to be components that we're in a position now with Geneva Village to interject those into the things we're doing in 2026. Where I think are the help from the private sector has been most valuable is really kind of understanding the various roles that the city can play, how we could accelerate some next steps, are there some interim steps that could happen on the site that don't require some of the big resources and big infrastructure investments that we would need? What does that site management look like in the interim? And then really, starting to understand that, that financing piece. You know, currently, when the Downtown Development Authority founded itself, right, and we established them, they did not seek bond ability or debt financing as part of their overall powers within the organization. So that is something that we, we could also look to the DDA. They would have to go back to their qualified electors and, and seek that as, as part of something that they could do. Their funds are amassing very slowly. They did get a nice bump in, in this last with, with property tax, a property directly to Sarah's point, coming out of nonprofit, tax exempt status, and moving into private ownership. So that was a nice bump that they saw. I think as we continue to see things, then they may have some capacity to help service debt. So while there are some steps that we're going to be taking in 2026, they're really primarily going to be embedded in some of those efforts. And then, I think, to Chris's point, making sure that we understand from the city perspective what it would be that we want kind of rolled up in that RFP, RFQ process.
I'll just add that too much of the public and perhaps councils thinking, we want to start that vision, that work with the community, that's what the next step could look like. We're, we have a lot of learning to do. When I say learn, you know, staff is, is learning, but I also think that 2026 will be a time for a couple of study sessions with council about these questions about how we organize and RFP, you know, processes, what could partnerships look like? You know, there was a continuum of options outlined here for how the city could organize to develop that property and that vision, and I think a lot of that strategy needs to happen next year so that we can be ready then to move forward with a more public process probably in, in 2027.
So this is, it feels like the most fundamental decision that we need to make is whether we want to retain ownership of the land or go into a public-private partnership. So I have a question related to that, is it, would it even make sense to do an RFP before we make that decision as a council or an RFQ? Because that feels like a big decision that I don't have enough information to make. And so, 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 you know, what is the process for making that decision as a staff question, but a question for anybody is, do you do the, can you do the RFQ if you haven't made that decision?
The answer to that is yes.
Okay, help me understand a little bit more about that.
Yeah, the, the, the marketplace wouldn't have huge expectations to merely engage in a transaction from this effort. You know, I'm sure a lot of people would love to. But the expectation isn't that. And when you talk to people who are actively involved in this process, I think they'll say the same thing. You can just glean a lot of information to help you with specifying direction from the process itself. And you'll also get an idea of who's out there, how many people are out there to gauge interest, which can also help, help you in your direction as far as, you know, sell or not sell, participate or not participate, things of that nature.
And I think your question is actually a couple of steps down the line. I think the scope and scale of it is the first question, is it going to be just Geneva Village property? Is it going to be just the city-owned property, or is the county going to be part of it, too? And is that entire area going to be, look different? Because that's even before you look at.
Yeah, I guess, I personally have already decided that, that doing all three parcels together feels way too big, and I feel like we just kind of need to strategically go after kind of the things we know we want to do. And I think we, so I know this is a comment, not a question. So, and we know we want to do Geneva Village, so it's kind of how do we do that and leave the other things open?
But couldn't, to Kyle's point, couldn't you have a whole strategic plan and do a portion at the top, but know where you're going?
That's, right, that's, I mean, like, yeah, that's, I'm saying, if, if Geneva Village is redone and then it, I mean, there's already discussions having a renovating or rebuilding this facility, it needs to be part of that conversation. If you do them separately, you're going to end up with three distinct and kind of.
So you said you want to call this Reichart Hall when it's rebuilt? Is that where we're, where we're going?
With the right donation.
Twenty million dollars, it's yours!
And, but, this is, it seems to me that we want, going back to now just the smaller Geneva Village, leaving the bigger strategic conversation, that we would want to have one developer so there was some cohesiveness and, you know, kind of one point to work from rather than chopping it up. That's just what, it feels like it's truer to what you're suggesting, which I agree with.
Yeah, and I, and I thought, too, back to our discussion about what does the city actively control right now? From a developer's perspective, that's, that's where the discussion is going to, going to want to stay, because there's a, a path of predictability there. Whether the city sells the land or wants to actively participate in redeveloping the land, it needs to stay focused in that regard on what it controls. So these outlined areas, you know, the area to the north where the county is and to the west, which are also private owners, a developer, by and large, isn't really going to be too interested in talking about that if there's no control there.
Right, and that's why I was saying, if, you know, I asked the question of what has the communication been with the county? Because in theory, you could have a combined city and county office facility, all on the north side, all completely redone one, and then you have, I don't know how many acres this whole thing is, is probably closer to nine, 10, something like that?
Sixteen, I think.
I don't know, either way, a lot.
It's big.
You've got some different options and things, that's where, I think.
We've engaged the senior staff at the, the county, and, you know, I want to be very careful that in this setting, I don't, you know, there, there's certainly no, no commitment there, but they have expressed, you know, curiosity and interest because they're facing, their facility is similar in age and condition to ours, so they've, 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 you know, thought of that same thing and they are interested in exploring.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I get the point, the county's like, yeah, no, we're good, we're going to figure that out. But if there's, how that all works, it's bigger than just Geneva Village, so we can't just do just that at one time.
Yeah.
I don't, yeah, I don't.
I disagree with you.
You and I, we're about to come to fisticuffs here.
Well, if you throw your twenty million dollars down, do whatever you want, right?
But, um, okay, so, but I guess, going back to the question I asked Sarah about subsidies, our main way of subsidizing affordable housing is with our South Metro Housing Authority and Lytech funding. And so if that's, if our goal is subsidized housing, it feels like that's, and I under, you know, going for that kind of funding kind of creates a lot of uncertainty on the timeline for that development, but that is our current major tool for subsidizing housing.
Not everyone's tool.
No, but it's our biggest tool we're flexing right now, and I feel like that might also need to be part of the financing conversation.
It could be. I would say if it's going to be a Lytech project, working with affordable housing developers that will still be privately owned, would be encouraged that it would still generate property tax increment revenue to then, that could feed back into the project, the increment that the property would generate, to then support the financing gap essentially, and feasibility of the project. It's something to consider, too. That's what I think.
I'd say if you go down that route, you're looking at a higher percentage of units that are affordable, as opposed to a market rate, five percent within the development, right? So an incentive to incent five percent of the units versus a sixty percent of the units or, you know, an eighty-twenty split, something like, like a Lytech deal, two totally different products, totally different approaches. And it sounded to me from the stakeholders that the former, or no, the latter is more, is the preferred method of like a proportion of a mixed income, five percent, 10 percent affordability within the unit structure. That's what we heard.
If you go to a Lytech project, it has to be.
A hun, it's mostly, that, that is an affordable housing project.
Minimum, and then it's not looking like this mixed-use rental ownership, different kinds of units property, because if we want to provide different types of housing, I think we should lead the way, and right on that property, the Lytech may not be the best way to go.
You could also imagine multiple developers, one being South Metro Housing and another one being Roberts Big Construction Company, and, you know.
But my point being, a Lytech building has to be.
Right, no, you would have one building that's a hundred percent and other buildings that are.
But it'd have to be so big, it would change the whole look and feel of what they're protecting.
I think it depends on the scale of, is it just two acres, is it seven acres?
If it's a larger acre, it'd be a different, but right now, looking at the smaller acreage.
It could also just be market rate housing, then your, if you're a house or if it's a property, then that portion of it would be affordable as well, adhering to that ordinance.
Correct, that's what I was thinking.
And we're, Columbine Square, we're subject to that ordinance. So, but this is a worthy discussion because they are two different things. When you solicit proposals, you'll get, you'll get input from two very distinctly different groups. There, there are groups who just play in the, the Lytech world, and then there are market rate developers and that stuff. Now, we're, we're getting more into the affordable housing component just because of, by way of ordinance. There are lots of new laws coming around in most every municipality that mandates affordable housing.
You're welcome.
But ours is the best, right?
Well, lead us into our next discussion, so unless there's any other.
I have one comment, please, or not?
Yeah, I, I wanted to ask the panel, too, what your experience was with workforce housing pertaining to, like, the property owner. So for example, schools are now looking at different kinds of workforce housing on school properties. Do you see municipalities doing something similar for entry level, you know, not as affluent, you know?
City managers, city attorneys.
Exactly. I'm thinking a ski chalet, but like, a grandma.
Well, I, the answer is yes, we are. Cities are trying to push it to the extent they can, but it's kind of a fine line. I mean, you have ordinances that, like, like Littleton's, at five percent, at a restricted, I think it's sixty percent, something around there. And as developers, we, we will underwrite that and we'll try and fit it in as best we can versus just waiving it, generally speaking, and paying you guys a, a big number to, to wave out of it. We'd rather not do that because it affects our total costs. But there's some other ordinances there that are just over the top and kind of mush out development altogether because it just puts too much pressure on, on the returns, and it becomes unfinancable. So it's a fine line, you know? I, I think with this parcel, you know, the, the ordinance itself is going to carry a certain number of affordable units by mandate, but it's a, it's an attractive enough a parcel, parcel where you're going to get market rate developers interested, they're going to want to develop it. And to me, ideally, given that there's a large commercial component to this site, being the municipal building, the ideal developer is, is a group who can do both, who can work a deal with both the commercial and the residential components, and somehow work a deal with the city, either redevelop this building, scrape it, build a new one, the city's a long-term tenant, and also can do the residential. And they're out there.
I would just add, I think, with what you're talking about with, you know, like, cities or hospitals building their own housing offsite, we're seeing that emerge in the mountain communities, where affordable housing is much more extreme of a need and the workforce is, you know, commuting from hours away. I think in metro Denver, I hope that's not what ends up happening in the sense that I hope that, you know, there's a lot of communities here and a lot of commuting that does occur, and a lot of other affordable housing that is occurring, that I would hope that that can be accommodated within, you know, the market itself as it is.
The reason I bring it up is because the site is next to a captive employer, essentially, the county and the city, and, you know, like.
We do let the employees leave, they're not captive.
Phrasing, but, I, I mean, it's, it, it feels like there's, there's something there because as it becomes, I mean, I think it's at least an option that you might consider exploring in the process in the future, just because as it becomes harder and harder for entry level staff to even afford to live in the city, when you're, when you're needing snowplow truck drivers or landscapers or irrigation specialists or attorneys, were you gesturing towards yourself?
Sorry, no, I was just thinking of our police officers.
Yeah, yeah, you know, like, there is a benefit more holistically to our city in the future, and it is a parcel that we control. So I, I think it's at least well worth exploring in that RFP process in the future.
And that's something that could be included in the development agreement, where you require maybe a percent of the house that's developed to be like resident occupied, so as in it's only going to be rented or sold to people that work within the city.
Which is an approach that other cities do. So I, for me, the thing that feels mo, the two things that feel most important to me is that we get a list of decisions that the council needs to make and kind of an order for that, because that feels really important to me, just kind of to know what our set of decisions that we need to make versus other decisions. And then, just based on this conversation, nothing's happened soon, and we're going to have a lot of discussions. And if that's true, we need to start tearing down what's there, because it's just going to rot. And I think we need to identify if, what, what do we want to keep? I want to keep the clock tower because the raccoons need a home, and, you know, then we need to start demolishing stuff and just make it into a park until we can come to a bigger decision.
Well, I think before we start making, you know, decisions like that, let's go through the facilities master plan, although let staff kind of work through the process here rather than council jumping in.
Do you expect that we, we will be trying to use those facilities for any purpose?
I mean, we've, we've explored some of that, like, we're using some of the.
I'm not talking about the lodge, just to be clear, I'm talking about.
Yeah, right, no, we've used some of the units for, for storage as we were doing renovations for the lodge, so we have tried to explore some things with, with our facilities team, and then, you know, to stay in that active conversation about, you know, does it reach a point that is burdensome? You know, because in the past, we've had a property manager that was caring for the site, but that was really that need for that resident interface, but now, now it is, you know, a city-owned site, and so it falls really within that realm of, of how we care for these facilities. So I, do you think the master plan is going to, going to tell us a lot about what's going to be needed? We're going through the process of minimizing that sort of ongoing daily operations or maintenance need, so we're hopeful.
And I think we let staff figure that out rather than councils, I mean, because And I think we let staff figure that out, rather than councils. I mean, because if we're going to sell it as a developer, why would the city take on extra costs of things that don't need to be taken on if it's going to be?
Robert Horn, I mean, that's, or Chris, right?
Yeah.
It's a six-year project, so.
Exactly.
Why not do it? It's, it's so different than Columbine Square, when I was pushing the owner to get rid of the, the building, and also get rid of the fencing, and just let it, let it go back to a deal. So, just for, just for the community's sake, it's an eyesight.
Right, I mean, and then Columbine Square got on fire. I mean, I, I just don't.
After, you know, where they just had it fenced off, and it was just overgrown, and
so. Yeah, I just, I just don't see anything good coming from letting that property sit there empty. And I, given our rapid decision-making process, I can see that.
Amen.
It's going to be there for a while.
Yep.
Look at that, Pat giving me an amen. You guys hear that?
Well, thank you for the ULA team, for being, yeah, thanks a lot.
Yeah, I, I mean, a, a big thank you to, to staff, and particularly.
Got a piece of chocolate.
Walking us through that, that process. A thank you again to Julie for spearheading that application, and a lot of the interdepartmental collaboration to, to get to that point. And then I do want to thank all of those stakeholders that came and spent time. I know that Hannah in particular said, you know, we have a day set aside for stakeholder input, and we got a little overzealous. So normally, that's a process that really accommodates about ten people, and we pushed all of the limits. So we super appreciate how, I think we had almost thirty, and then we whittled down from there. But a thank you to council for, for, yeah, like, for nominating those folks, because I think it really did enrich the process. But I know that it was a little bit burdensome of how the panel had to split up, and then share back some of that information. So we really appreciate the full.
Where they made the big bucks, right?
Yeah, yeah, free. They got fed.
You get your big bucks, have a piece of chocolate, right?
Thank you, thank you so much. I mean, this is, this is an exciting vision. It's very helpful. So, thank you. Shall we transition into?
Will you?
We want to take a quick break, since half the council just got up. We'll take a quick break, since half the council just got up.
I think council has decided to take just three.
All right, moving on to, can, kind of talking more about affordable housing policy here.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. We were last in front of you for a study session on affordable housing in April, and a few things emerged from there. And we committed to coming back with an update on our, our affordable housing policy, namely the IHO, and how it's going for us, and how it's going for others, what we kind of know about that, that space right now. We also heard your discussion about expanding the use of our, of our IHO funds. And so we wanted to come tonight, we haven't ever formalized that in a policy on paper. We have your, we have your, the ordinance and principles that have informed us on how we use that, but we want to kind of take that to the next step, and hopefully reflect your discussions back then on, and have that as a policy. And then finally, I, I know we can, we can let you know about our latest discussions with the Meadowwood community about kind of some needs that, that they have, and a, and a request that we have from them for a little more assistance. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kathleen and Julie, who can dig into.
Before they jump, I just want to acknowledge, you know, Robert likes to see his face on things. We got about ninety-six percent of your face on this screen here, so.
The only face that's covered up by dirt.
You were doing your job well.
I was vigorously doing the groundbreaking.
Sorry, go ahead.
Like a dribble.
It does look like a dribble, that's exactly what I was thinking. It's larger than a dribble, that was. Okay, so, I'm, I'm really, you know, here in supportive of Julie tonight, I'm advancing slides.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So I'll turn it directly over to Julie, and you can walk us through this update.
Thank you, and thank you, council, for your time this evening. So this evening, I will go through the agenda, go through really an overview of the structure of the inclusionary housing ordinance, the results that we've had year-to-date, future work that still needs to be done, some regional comparisons and results, and then also just considerations for future updates. I do want to note, as we review these items, it's really important to recognize that the housing market is influenced by forces at the local, regional, state, and federal levels, many of which are outside of the city's control. Housing is deeply interconnected, and any changes in one area are going to have impacts on others. So for that reason, you know, housing policy really requires careful consideration to make sure that we are fully understanding, as best as we can, the potential effects of any policy changes. Going through the IHO background, I know there are those here who could provide a lot more context, having participated in all of this process and these decisions that were made. But just as a quick overview and introduction, the state passed HB twenty-one eleven seventeen in two thousand twenty-one, which essentially allowed local governments the ability to regulate development and redevelopment, to create additional affordable housing units, provided that there are alternatives for compliance outside of just building the units. Prior to this law, any sort of inclusionary housing would have been considered rent-controlled, and would not have been allowed. So inclusionary housing policies in general help use market rate development to generate new affordable housing that is integrated throughout developments in the city, rather than at concentrated locations. So Littleton and its partners collaborated and completed an extensive process and review to create the inclusionary housing ordinance, based upon guiding principles developed in conjunction with the housing task force, to really ensure the policy is going to be tailored to the city's context and needs. And the IHO passed unanimously in November of two thousand twenty-two. And the next couple of slides are going to review the parameters and the reasoning behind their selection. I'm taking a look at inclusionary housing considerations in general and overall, this is really obvious, but affordable units requirements are going to constrain the future revenue of a project for a rental project, and are going to constrain the revenue upfront for, on for-sale projects. And any fees are going to impact the overall project costs, which can impact the viability and feasibility of a project. Incentives can be used to offset some of these impacts of these requirements. So the city worked with Root Policy Research on a feasibility analysis of varying set-aside levels. They reviewed set-asides from two to eight percent. The results of that are noted on this slide for various housing prototypes, for sale units, rental units, apartments, et cetera. So after careful consideration and review of these results, council selected the five percent set-aside for projects that are five or more units. The fee-in lieu was based on the total development cost per unit, with the split based on the size of the project. The five to nine unit projects are based on fifty percent of the total development cost, and then those projects that are twenty units or more, the fee-in lieu is based on seventy-five percent of the development cost. One note that's not reflected on this current fee-in lieu schedule is that that fee-in lieu is further reduced on projects with five to nineteen units on a graduated scale of five percent for each additional unit. So a project with ten units would have a fifty percent requirement on the fee-in lieu amounts. That fee-in lieu is adjusted annually by the CPI. In two thousand twenty-five, that was, fee was adjusted by five point two-two percent. There's a CPI adjustment scheduled for this upcoming year, and it's two point three percent, and that's anticipated for two thousand twenty-six, which finance will discuss in the next presentation.
Question, there's a question over here, with the cost of development versus for-sale versus rental. You know, if you're building the exact same, basically the same thing, what, what is the difference in cost there? Is it just because they recruit more of that over time as a rental, versus if they sell, it's just a one-time revenue?
Do you mean the total development cost, what's that based on? It's just the cost to build?
I know, but, so from a developer's perspective, why, if you're, let's say you're building, you know, a fifty-unit building, you can either sell them, or you can rent them on, rent them.
Yeah, the specifications for for-sale, like a condo, are different than, than rentals. So the construction costs are actually increased, if you were doing those for-sales. So in most cases, the for-sale that we're talking about tend to be attached units more in the duplex, triplex, or like row home. And so we're not seeing stacked units that are in sort of a multifamily setting that are for-sale.
And as to if it's not the actual development cost to developers, we're not charging them an actual seventy-five percent of their costs, but seventy-five percent of a.
Total development cost, yeah.
An estimated.
Estimated, yeah.
Yeah, and then adjusted each year.
Yeah. Right, and then I think one other note on, you know, fifty percent versus seventy-five percent, was just the acknowledgement that smaller projects can be more difficult to finance, and it's more complicated. So recognizing we didn't want to prevent those kinds of projects in the city, you have lower cost for that. The affordability levels were set at sixty percent of area median income for rentals, eighty percent on for-sale. And then the for-sale has an exception, where you can go up to a hundred percent of the area median income for duplex, triplex, quadplex, townhome, or cottage core communities. And reviewing the affordability letter, affordability levels, Root Policy Research looked at this, and the city looked at it, and just kind of considered a regional analysis, as well as alignment with the city's housing needs, based on the housing needs assessment. That really found that the need, even though the need was greatest at the lower AMI levels, that need persisted up to these selected levels at the rental and for-sale piece. These also align with other funding programs like Lytech, and now Proposition one twenty-three in many areas, so there's good alignment on that. When looking at the affordability levels, another consideration is just making sure, being mindful of the market rates, so that the affordability AMI levels are not overlapping with market rate product that's available within the city, so you have that differentiation. I do want to, oh, sorry.
A little bit more, because there, there still is question on what does affordable housing mean? And when you have, when you bring it to the AMI, can you talk about what that means, when you're going to say, this is, we're having a cost of a unit that person that makes fifty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars doesn't have to spend more than thirty percent of their income on that, because then that's not affordable, it's burdened? Can you talk about that a little more, or?
Sure, and, I mean, the area median income amounts are noted here, and those definitions for what is affordable, that is based on federal definitions that define affordable as no more than thirty percent of your income. And then that is going to vary, right? The IHO calls for us to look at CHAFAs, schedule of what is affordable for each, what's affordable rent, and what does that mean with the caveat as well about that thirty percent. So you can kind of take a look and plug in on for-sale, and their table gives you a good idea of what's affordable for a rental for all of these various income levels. Sorry, no. That's okay. I did want to also, if you can, well, this is fine here, take a moment, because at the March study session, you know, we did hear the interest in, you know, can we review the fee-in lieu and the policy? How can we incentivize for-sale more, so that we're creating stronger incentives in that space, to generate those more affordable for-sale opportunities? I share that question, and I think a lot of other people regionally and statewide do as well, because it's difficult to do. So I think there's many considerations and questions to be answered in looking at that, and looking at what works, just because here, again, there's a lot of trends in housing that the city does not have control over. Also, it's a mostly built-out city, we've got some limitations on what gets built here that may constrain any impact of the IHO policy. Notably, you know, when you start building at a certain scale, development gets more difficult, if you're not, if you're not building at scale. In the current market, kind of what is feasible to build, what gets built most easily and financed most easily are large-scale, single-family developments and multifamily developments. Those are factors that are not necessarily within the city's control, it's based on the larger overall market. So again, like, those opportunities for those large-scale projects in the city, as a mostly built-out city, are a little limited. Have met with some developers who work in the affordable housing space, who work in diverse housing types, who look at smaller housing sizes, lower prices, and what we've heard is the large barrier to coming into town is, you know, available land, just in general, the size of the land, the size of the land that's available, and then the cost overall. And then, taking a look at what's in the development pipeline for Littleton post-IHO, on a for-sale basis, you know, there is a pre-application, that is twenty-seven single-family homes. There was pre-app for twelve homes, but they were kind of a townhome style, but our code would consider them slot homes, so those are not allowed. There is one application in that is seventeen single-family homes, so we're kind of seeing, you know, smaller infill opportunities as our larger. as our larger opportunities have kind of worked on developing out. So I think kind of answering those questions of how can we get more for-sale housing? Will take some additional work to really understand what kind of parameters might impact and make building those for-sale units more feasible, given the context and some of the limited space. In the meantime, I will say I'm grateful that we have SMHO and Habitat partnering to provide some of these for-sale affordable housing units and ownership opportunities.
Has there been any discussion about potential redevelopment? I don't know, aging shopping centers or places that might be interested in redevelopment? I mean, I know we're land-locked, we don't have much land left now with all the housing and commercials being developed, but there are some places that might be in the future? Have you thought about those?
We've taken a look at inventory, you know, what vacant land is available, and that could be suitable for affordable housing and some of those pieces. And again, I think there are some future opportunities for some of the locations. You know, and I know there's some conversations about some of the spots that could be repurposed for other things that are maybe parking now. So yes, it's something to keep an eye on, but again, absent, you know, money to go purchase these properties or, you know, that becomes maybe difficult on what you can actually do. When we have these conversations with housing developers too, it's kind of like, what are your needs? We can keep that in mind so that we know, you know, what's happening and what those possibilities are.
City's role in that was kind of done with the OUC, because in all of our quarter-mix use, residential is allowed. It's in the zoning, so it's not like the city's holding back by not having it allowed.
I'm just, you know, they, looking at the land, and I just thought if there was any thoughts on, I don't know, I think of shop, aging shopping centers.
Right, but I'm saying, but the zoning has already exists for them to put residential on there. So it's not like the city or zoning is holding that back.
And I think a market dynamic here in Littleton is that the cost of land is still very high. You may remember the transaction price for something like Mineral Place, right? So I think that was $58 million for just the land. So that, I think that is also just a barrier right now that that cost of land is, is something where, particularly for affordable housing, where probably some of the better opportunities are when the land either can be donated or is already in possession, like these Habitat homes, right, that the land's being pulled into that land trust, and then the structure is what's being sold to try and meet those goals of affordability.
I think Costco's a perfect example of the redevelopment.
So moving on to the incentives, these were also selected after research of local market conditions as well as interviews with the development community, with the intent to really help offset some of the reduced income and increased fees that mandated affordable housing results in. The incentive structure is two-tiered, with deeper incentives for the majority affordable and the for-sale diverse housing types, as mentioned. We've seen some of the most valued, well, some of the most valued incentives that you can't really put a number on, it's expedited review. And that has won, you know, it's difficult to quantify, but it's been highly valued. It is one that everyone takes advantage of, that is the most-used incentive, which is not surprising. That expedited review is going to be updated for the majority affordable projects in order to meet the fast-track review process requirements of Proposition 123. That's due by the end of 2026, but I think the work the city has already done throughout the development review improvement process already has us well on our way to meeting those requirements. The other ones that are used most often, obviously the parking reduction, particularly for affordable housing, has been very useful and beneficial. And everyone, of course, who doesn't like a pay-rebate? So preliminary results so far, that first picture is a recent construction picture for Powers Place, which is the first project to go through the IHO and will create 17 affordable units in the city. And then I think you're all familiar with the second one, Montview Flats, which is the first project to receive funding from the Affordable Housing Fund. The incentives, notably parking, also helped that project pencil out and work in that space. And then the expedited review really helped meet the tight timeline constraints for permit issuance that the LITC funding requires. Again, it's a really exciting result, really reflecting the dedication and the partnership between the city and SMHO and what we can do working together to address the city's housing needs. And again, I said it in March, and I'll say it again, I'm just very impressed by all the staff work internally to partner and get everything done that needed to be done on Montview Flats. So I was very impressed by the dedication and professionalism getting it done. Further on the results, you know, these are just the comments on the numbers, really. So dispersed $900,000, we'll talk more about that policy in a moment. We're anticipating 127 affordable units. The feedback has been that the IHO is working as designed. The applicants are not finding it an undue burden to build the units. There was some stress with the Affordable Housing Policy Agreement process as we worked through that, the first couple rounds. But with immense help from the city attorney's office, we have refined the language and the template. I think we're in a good place on that, and I think that process is going to run much smoother going forward. This slide put on one page looks really easy and quick. Unfortunately, the items on here are going to take a significant amount of time, in particular, the Compliance Monitoring Program and the For-Sale Housing Policy Agreement. We saw with the Rental Housing Policy Agreement that it did take those several iterations and feedback from applicants to really get it to a mutually acceptable place and get that process streamlined. The for-sale agreement is a lot more complicated than rental. There are a lot more items to determine if we're going to determine on our own the parameters that we decide what is affordable resale. What does that mean? How often do we decide what those numbers are? Do we want to partner with someone else to provide that work and help us along that space? Like with a community land trust, what do we want that to look like? That is going to take some time to build out and then also get feedback from applicants on how that is working, and then also sorting through what that's going to look like over time. Also anticipate the compliance policy is going to evolve over time and after lessons are learned once it's launched. But we still need to kind of determine what does that process look like? What are the templates, what are the due dates? You know, we need to decide and create all of that still. And then moving on to, in the interest of time, to the Affordable Housing Fund Disbursement Policy. As Jim mentioned, we discussed it at the March study session. We drafted the policy, which was attached to the package for this evening. And so requesting this evening, you know, feedback input, sign-off, if we're okay to go ahead and implement it or not. And we do have two requests in for funding that we would anticipate bringing back at a regular council meeting sometime soon. Just wanted to pause and get feedback on that. Is this a time to talk much more specifically about those requests?
It's a request, the policy in general, I don't think.
Julie, could you speak to the housing preservation aspect and how we address that and how it is, you know, can be aligned with the ordinance? And because that was one of the pieces that I think Council spent most time on at the last study session.
Sure, at the last study session, I kind of needed to go back and review what the ordinance specified in terms of how that funding gets used. And what the ordinance says is that funds that are used from the Housing Fund need to be used for housing that is formally restricted as affordable. So there has to be a formal restriction in place, so deed restriction, covenant restriction. So there's kind of flexibility in how those funds could be used. You know, the original intent of HB 211117 was to create new affordable units, but if you have a situation where, you know, we know that a lot of units are coming off of affordability periods, and they may or may not still remain affordable, absent like renovation, that then they enter into an extension of their land use restriction agreements. You could have another 30 to 40 years of affordability. So provided there is that restriction in place, and like you could have a preservation project that is then extending that restriction or creating it, in the case of, you know, someone entered into a land trust and you have that agreement. So you can create those new restrictions, you can extend restrictions. But as long as there is a deed, some sort of formal mechanism restricting it as officially affordable, then those funds, it's an applicable, it's an applicable use.
Yeah, I'm glad we have this and put this forward here, because I think preservation is just as important, if not more, than creating new stuff, because it's actually, actual people's homes right there that could be losing the affordable aspect of that. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I think there are, there are some of those properties. That's, that's one of the requests that will come before Council is that extension of the deed restriction, that affordability deed restriction. So being able to pump some funds into a project and renovate it to meet, you know, more energy efficiency and other sort of livability aspects that, you know, that, that's really where we have the opportunity to support preservation.
I mean, the only question I have is, would this be a policy that Council needs to take action on? Or is, you know, it's just a memo to Council staff policy here? What is?
I think we'd like Council's, at least, direction that this meets your interests.
Yeah, because I, I think this is, this just helps define the procedure for us that's baked into the ordinance.
It helps us to know we get the requests, if it's in line with your, with your wishes, and then we can consider bringing it forward to you.
Great, Council?
Yeah, so that, you know, like they moved from not having that restriction of affordability into a deed restriction when, when the residents purchased, became a resident owned.
Where else could we put the funds like Habitat for Humanity? Because they have deed restrictions, I mean, where else? What are our options?
This is probably a fine time for us to kind of share the couple of requests that we have that we do think can meet this, this policy. And I think it can help to illuminate your, your question, Council.
My way has a request, I think you're familiar, because they had to take out bridge loan financing.
Can you speak louder, please?
Because they had to take out bridge loan financing as they were waiting for these state funds to be dispersed. So they had interest income that they had to pay that was an unexpected additional expense. So they had requested support in that, because that, those funds went towards the purchase of their park, which created those new deed-restricted units. So they're requesting for help there. We also have a request. I'm sorry, that's, it's around $90,000, plus or minus a couple grand, 90,92.
I'm sorry, I'm not clear. No, we gave them the bridge loan. What are you asking? I'm not clear.
Oh, so their request.
I think Julie explained it well. I'll just, I can summarize by say, by saying they had some delay in receiving their Prop 123 funds from the state, so they had to take out a loan so that they could start paying for that, for their property. That loan had some interest attached to it in the amount of approximately net, the $90,000. So they have, they have, you know, requested some help from us to just pay that interest so that they don't have to raise their rents more than they are, which would jeopardize the affordability of those, those units.
And the, and lieu would, that would qualify for lieu and it meets whatever.
In the new policy.
And then the second request that we have in is from another affordable housing partner in town, Grove Wood Community Development. They are requesting, they're doing a renovation and rehabilitation project on 64, 67 units, three, across three properties in town to update them. And so they're requesting for support in funding. They have a gap in their funding. Those aren't, those ones are the, all, two of those units are affordable to people making 50% of the area median income and under. Two of the units go up to 60% of the area median income. Grove Wood Community Development, Grove Wood.
And, and the reason that, you know, what's different about that project that exists now is affordable. But as part of that renovation, they're extending that term another 40 years for affordability. So those would be affordable units. And again, they anticipate still being able to stay at that 50% of average median income or below.
Which is comparatively very low, when even our, our partners at SMHO, their affordable, affordability levels are more in the 60 to 80. They can vary, but it's higher than 50. So to have a project that wants to, to commit to that lowest affordability level is attractive.
And that is, you know, one of our greatest needs. If you remember from Dr. Cox's presentation on the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, those lower AMIs are one of the most challenging areas, so. Do you want to say the number?
800,000. And the county is also coming in some funds, and so there are other partners and other funding that will leverage.
And if I remember right, it's a 20, roughly a $25 million renovation.
That sounds about right.
For, for all three projects, so. Yeah, and then they're, so they have about $10 million that they're putting towards the project and then have other funding sources to fill out that $25 million. That's the cost of renovating the three properties.
We know that this is the first you're hearing of this, so we're not asking for your, you know, direction on these. I think they are, they are current requests, so we're, we're working with them and we'll continue to vet them and bring them forward if we think that they're consistent with the policy and, you know, can work for our, our needs.
So I really appreciate the work on the policy. Thank you very much. I think this is an important step, and I think this, this really is a, a tool for us to kind of reduce gentrification in some of our neighborhoods and maintain some of our affordable housing. So I think that's, this is great. The two things that I think about when I read this policy is, you know, we're going to run out of money, and so we, so, and so, you know, what, other than through our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, are there other tools that we can leverage to add to this fund? And I would, and, you know, interesting one is the, when you talked about increasing energy efficiency. So will there be, ever be energy efficiency funds that we can kind of funnel through this fund or figure out ways to help affordable housing and use, use our presence to kind of bring more funds to the table? I think I'd be interested in that. And I would also be interested in just, the one thing this policy doesn't do, and it would be kind of hard to do, is, is how do we think about using this money strategically? Essentially, we're taking, right now, kind of what comes in the door and, and reviewing it one by one. And how do we think about strategically, what are the array of options for using money over a year or two? And that's really hard, because you don't know what's going to walk in the door. But I would love if we could start thinking about how do we be strategic, you know?
That's what this does as it expands.
Well, it does, and it goes in the right direction. So that's not what I'm trying to say, is that it's, it's absolutely. But the next step is how do you think about, what's the whole playing field? And how do we use our funds to the best advantage within that playing field? And part of it, the playing field, we'll never know, right? There's, but anyways, this is great.
And I will say, you know, probably one of the biggest areas of concern for, for us in, in thinking through particularly how these funds can, can catalyze the city into this affordable housing space, and, and having more units has been Prop 123 in the goal there. Right, like, and so we've spent a lot of time fretting about, are we going to make this goal? Are we going to have to take the time out? Because remember, you have three years to meet the number that you, as, as part of Prop 13 and entering into it, you agree to a certain number of units. You have three years to get there. We all know that three years is like no time at all. I mean, it's very, very difficult. And, and what it looks like is if you don't reach that goal, then you sit out and are ineligible for those funds. The funds are way more competitive than I thought, I think we thought they would be. But that, that has been the primary focus, is making sure that we're using these funds to catalyze us into that next round of Prop 123, where hopefully it starts to level out, and there, there is funding that the city is able to, to capture through that mechanism too.
So what I think I heard you say is you're strategically trying to use these funds so that we can get more funds in the future.
And we'll echo kind of what you were saying, Robert, too, about like the kind of, the way that we are approaching this right now is that kind of first come, first use. And not to say that any of the projects that you're proposing are bad. Intuitively, I feel like, like the mayor was saying, that projects that preserve affordability also have kind of a higher bang-for-buck valuation in a lot of ways. I feel like I know that intuitively, but I also don't necessarily have like... I feel like I know that intuitively, but I also don't necessarily have like numbers to back up that. And I'm willing to admit my intuition may be wrong. But I think what Councilmember Riker was also talking about too is like, there's a value proposition in the sense that you are making a decision based on the information you have in front of you and not the next potential decision. So by putting money into preserving these affordable units, we are also not then putting money as a down payment on a land purchase for SMHO. And it's hard to know how to, like, not to say that you would know all future projects, but there might be some good rules of the road that we can also go by saying like, a dollar invested in housing preservation is high in that, that kind of preference level versus a dollar in new build. And there's got to be some sort of scaling that kind of goes along with that preference.
We, we.
Which one is that you need both?
Right, yeah, that is true.
You're in the hole. And if you don't build new, it, you know, so it's all.
We, we hope to have enough money to make that conversation interesting. Because, for instance, if we, we have one point eight million left and, you know, with the two projects that we've just, you know, outlined that we'll be considering to bring back to you, you know, that, those are, um, nine hundred thousand of that. So you have a million left. We know that SMHO has one more, uh, project that they're certainly preparing to request partnership on. And that million, by our experience, could be, could be tight. So, um, those will all be things we'll have, we'll bring back more formally to you. You know, and we don't know, since we heard tonight even, many of our residential developers are choosing to build, we don't know how much of the five point six million that was anticipated will actually materialize as in lieu fees. So those are all, those are all things that we're, we're thinking about.
Could we use in, in lieu fees would qualify for a Geneva Village incentive in order to get affordable housing? Or does that not?
If there were a deed restriction.
Then we could do that. I mean, the timing may not work out with this three-year window, given what we just heard about six years. But since it's a finite number, we only have the five, what, point six million, that we need to be strategic like, um, what they were talking about. So I would advocate for, you know, considering Geneva Village in order to get some affordable units in there.
But three years, just the one, two, three rolling average there? It's not like it's a set time period there.
Right. Our funds are not set, but you're trying to, you know, and get the number of units up. And six years is not, it's too far away, but think about it.
I don't think so. I hear most council, but, and head shaking that they're good with the policy.
Yeah. I am. Uh, I've got like a really mild concern, um, that I'm sure, um, this is just user error here. But so when, when I look on page two, under affordable housing fund disbursement policy, the first review criteria for funding requests talks about, um, otherwise restricted to ensure long-term thirty-plus years affordability. So are we saying that it always has to be thirty-plus years of affordability? Is, okay.
That's, that's how the ordinance is defined.
Right, okay. And so that's already in the ordinance. Okay, that makes a lot of sense to me. I guess I, I'm, I'm a little, like, if you're rehabbing an existing property, the, the longevity of, you're, you're saying to the developer that whatever rehab you're doing, you're going to have to be in it for thirty years, even though the property may be older. So doesn't that in a sense sort of disincentivize people from rehabbing versus just scraping and building something new?
So in the case of the request we have in front of us, they are rehabbing and then committing to a forty-year deed restriction.
So, so I.
Scraping, building something new, then they wouldn't be giving those funds.
And so I, I think they're.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, so, and it may be the way that those units were built that they see enough of a runway, you know, to, to achieve both that like high-quality living that is sort of baked into their mission, Grove Woods, um, and then also that they can rehab in a way that, that deed restriction stays in place.
Okay, okay. That, that makes a ton of sense. I was just trying to wrap my head around that, so thank you.
And this isn't excluding anything. This is just giving us another option because it wasn't in explicitly in the ordinance to say that this is how we could do it. We've talked about preservation. We haven't had preservation as an option before, really.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Moving on to the regional comparison of other inclusionary housing options. You'll see on this chart, there's a lot of variability as jurisdictions are setting parameters that are according to their local context needs and goals. Generally speaking, you'll see set aside percentages ranging from five to twenty-five percent. Affordability level set at fifty to a hundred twenty percent of the area median income, although Boulder is a bit of an outlier in allowing up to a hundred twenty percent of the area median income, which makes sense given how expensive Boulder is. It's a little difficult to compare the fee and low amounts because some jurisdictions have chosen to do it based upon square footage and others have it based on unit count. I won't go into this in too much detail, but in taking a look at sort of the regional results for how these are working across the area, um, there's a lot happening in the housing space regionally right now. So it is honestly hard to stay on top of what every city is doing because there are just a lot of conversations happening. Um, and the other piece here is, you know, the context across these, uh, cities are very different. So that context varies widely and so do the results. However, so Broomfield, you know, we know that, they saw they were receiving mostly fee and lieu from how theirs was designed. And so they recognized those levels were too low. They created a phase in income increase. And so now they're finding that the program is creating more income-aligned housing, which means that they are getting fewer cash contributions to their housing development fund. Um, the information looks like from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-five, their inclusionary housing has resulted in seventy-six for-sale homes, three hundred thirty-one rentals, and approximately ten million in fee and lieu. Uh, they also noted, you know, they have, now that people are choosing to build units more, that they've had some, uh, issues, just not issue, but like, um, some concerns with staffing and figuring out, monitoring all that compliance program and making sure all those units are in compliance. Denver now has a, is fully on this year after two grace periods for their inclusionary housing. Uh, they're anticipating four hundred to five hundred income restricted units per year, depending on the project volume they're seeing in that year. Louisville, um, from, as far as I could tell from a couple of months ago, hadn't received any residential projects that had been approved for onsite housing, but they've received some fee and lieu. They recently, this year, were looking at increasing their set aside percentages, but decided not to. But they are also kind of reviewing some of the parameters to align with their housing action plan that they have completed. Longmont, I don't have recent figures for Longmont's and their, um, inclusionary housing for the for-sale piece was around for the longest standing one in the state, I believe. But in two thousand twenty-two, they had twenty-three projects and fourteen of those were providing units and five are paying the fees. So they were seeing three hundred thirty-five units and about a hundred eighty-four thousand in fee and lieu. Longmont has also done recent work in reviewing their fees and their policies. And they have also been doing a lot of work on their affordable for-sale provisions, in kind of determining what the right prices are for that. Because some of the levels of what the affordability would suggest people can require are not things developers can actually build. So they're kind of working through that piece. And they've noted that the only affordable housing developer that they've had come in to build those for-sale units has been Habitat, um, so far. And then regionally, there are other cities that have been considering inclusionary housing policies and that work and conversation is ongoing. So just going through kind of some of the considerations for updating any of the parameters for the IHO. Again, reiterating that housing is interconnected. It doesn't operate in a vacuum. Any change to one aspect of the system is going to have a ripple effect in other places. So any adjustments to policy kind of require that careful balance informed by the best available and recent data analysis of how the local market is going to respond. Challenge with that is, um, a little heightened at the moment, given market uncertainty and volatility. It makes it, um, extra fun and complicated. Uh, another piece is, you know, the development pipeline in Littleton has been robust for several years now. So kind of understanding the expectations, where is that going to continue to look that way? Um, because inclusionary housing really does work best when there is a robust development pipeline or are there other changes that we would anticipate and need to kind of shift? How we're looking at that. In terms of like the timing and the frequency, um, creating sort of like a predictable update schedule can help ensure the stability of the program and then retain that clarity for the development community so that they know this is what Littleton is doing. This is what they're prioritizing. I don't have to worry that it's changing constantly and it's going to change at will and at whim. I think there's also some considerations in terms of timing updates with, you know, other comprehensive plan work or the housing action plan that's going to be required in two thousand twenty-eight, because that can help create alignment. And also to make sure that we are leveraging the most recent community engagement and what the community needs and then what our recent strategies are so that they're all working in tandem with each other. On that community engagement note, um, it is really important to have community engagement around this. We want to hear from the community and the city's partners, including affordable and market rate developers, to really fully understand any concerns they would have and any potential impacts they are seeing to building within the city. Um, we did receive feedback, um, during the original IHO passage process that there was a need for more communication, um, within the community. So that is important. And there's also, um, considerable ongoing other work that this can dovetail into, you know, including the Littleton Boulevard Subarea Plan, uh, the Dr. Cog Regional Housing Needs Assessment that we heard about, and also work that's related to state legislation requirement deadlines, um, that are coming up. So there's really an opportunity to develop a thoughtful process for adjustments, how we make those adjustments, when those happen. And that can create some predictability in timing as well as aligning with other work that is happening, um, at the local, state, and regional levels. Um, and then again, to just make sure that we're maximizing the limited housing policy levers that we have available to make sure that we're continuing to use those most effectively, to continue to create a robust and resilient economy that includes housing for residents across all income levels and stages of life. Um, and with that, I will move on to questions and conversation.
Questions, council? Peters?
Can we go back to that chart you had up?
The regional one?
Yeah. Am I, maybe I'm not understanding something about this. Does, do Boulder, Longmont, and Louisville, what does all residential mean? Even single-family may have some sort of, it means if you build one residential unit, their inclusionary housing policy applies? So you have some fee that is kicked in or something?
Fee or mill. Whereas Littleton is, we don't, it doesn't apply until you're at five units or more.
That's what I thought of that. So I don't know if that's something we talk about at some point. Or, I mean, five percent is lower than anything else on there. I understand giving people a lot of warning about if that's going to go up even a percent. Like, I don't want to stress out any sort of developers. I know we're asking them to do all sorts of things and pay all sorts of fees, but I don't, I would be interested in talking about both of those columns, I guess, at some point.
Have we all? Question, change to the policy would be the preservation piece?
That's it. For policy.
Because right now it doesn't include it and, and I'm going to expand.
Yes, and a CPI increase that is anticipated upcoming, that, those are scheduled for every year.
Yeah. And will come to council as part of that fee schedule?
I mean, along the lines of Councilmember Peters, I think, you know, I would like to see some proposal or options to incentivize for-sale or, you know, what, what does that look like? Is that saying a set aside is four percent for for-sale and six percent for rental? What, what might move the needle there? Or even going up to a hundred twenty percent AMI for, for for-sale? I'm going to submit over there. Some of those things that might change and developers might say, okay, I'm going to build some that's for-sale rather than for rent because it's worth there.
Yeah, on, on that question for for-sale, I, I guess, and maybe this is too technical. I would really like to understand the, the type of housing that can be built to meet the for-sale needs. Like what, if the developers can't, what, what kind of housing does it have to be to be actually, to be able to build it, to sell it at an affordable rate?
And along those lines, what is the percentage of ones that are for-sale versus for rent that are going through the process right now?
You mean, so we have the ones that I listed. We have two in pre-app, one that is slot home, so it can't move forward. So one pre-app, one application that are for-sale options. Everything else is rental.
So it's all, it's almost all rentals?
Right.
So I, so.
What is the kind of type?
Yeah, well, if, if, if there's a, a specific type of type, I don't even know what that means, type of housing that can be for-sale, then how do we structure our, are there things we can do to structure our, uh, code to make it easier to build that type of housing?
That makes sense.
You know, it's one to four units, you know, one, single-family, two, three, and fourplexes. Once you get above that, then you run a construction defect laws that have been around forever. And the reason we're in this problem in the first place is everything being built is, uh, for rent because of our construction defect laws. So if we can get rid of that, things would change quite dramatically.
Well, the other way to interpret what you said is you just said we need to build more fourplexes.
More, well, that, you asked a question.
Right, I know. I know, and I appreciate your answering it. Thank you.
It works great along Littleton Boulevard or any quarter.
It doesn't necessarily be, I mean, you could, modular housing isn't that, or prefab housing? I mean, thinking outside the box here.
I mean, it's going to follow along our normal housing type. So yes, it's an option, but then we have, you know, rules about where that can go in the city and where that works. And again, with those smaller projects, because we don't have large sites, yeah, the, the financing question, where does that become feasible for a developer is a more complicated question, which is where I have the same questions. Because when you have those smaller, where does it become feasible to? And, and what, are there additional incentives to make that even more attractive? But again, because of the larger complex systems that are outside of control, I think that's just a difficult question in general.
I feel like that's my job.
Yeah. And do you think, um, you know, we've had conversations with probably the only for-sale condo developer local, spelled with a K? And it's the scale, right? Like being able to have a project of the size that they need to, to be able to make those units affordable. So I think the only project that's close to us is some of that, um, Greenfield development that's happening in the south part of Lone Tree. So that's probably one of their, um, most recent projects because they're able to achieve that scale. But they just need a certain amount of land to be able to do it and make the, the project pencil. That's what developers like to say. Yeah, I was like, I, they did give me a number and I have to, now I have to go back in my notes, but yeah. It's double-digit acres.
Okay.
So.
It's not two-point, whatever.
It's not two-pointing, yeah. Not two-pointing. But it's, it's at least double digits of, of acreage, so, yeah, makes sense.
I mean, do you think maybe moving forward the next year, we could have some, you know, options to do some tweaks to try to incentivize for-sale in IHO? What, what would be the next step for that? Because I think we kind of asked for it and we, we acknowledged it, but I don't see a movement towards that.
I, I would say, um, and then we can, I think, hear more. But we would like to, if we did it the way we did it, a few years, years ago, to have that, multidisciplined, you know, task force, help us with that question so that we could understand the impacts and kind of know what, and be really informed with that would be a good way to go. I don't think it has to be, you know, necessarily a certain large or small process, but we could come back to you if it's council's interest that we, um, that we do that. And then we come back with what that timeline could look like. Given where we are, it might be good to, to check back in a couple of months.
Man, I'm not saying it needs to be rushed, but I'm just trying to say.
Right, I'm here, you're interested in our.
And I, I think, you know, where Julie said a few times, like, within a municipal context, it's really hard to affect that, that for-sale market. So we are, I'm still sitting on the advisory committee as part of those regional strategies for Dr. Cog. So I think that that's going to be one of the things that's super important is that if we're able to incentivize at a regional level, that there's a strategy that multiple municipalities can, can sort of lean into and push forward. That's where we're going to see the market start to shift into there. So that's one of our biggest challenges is, is what you can do singularly as a municipality is very, very limiting. So, um, those strategies are set to be kind of solidified January, February of next year is, is, is the process that we're going through. So hopeful that that might yield some strategies that, that others are willing to help push forward as well. It's really, really challenging.
But, so Andrea said she wanted to talk about applicability and set aside. And I think that's a valuable conversation. I, you know, just reflecting on the predictability, feels like it would be valuable to just say the council, or try to create a custom of the council revisiting it every five years. And so if this was done in twenty twenty-two, then twenty. And so if this was done in two thousand twenty-two, then twenty twenty-seven, which I know is not what you just asked for, so I apologize that I'm, you know, but, but twenty twenty-seven would be the right year for us to do the work, to try to kind of establish a pattern of predictability.
Yeah, to echo, there's a lot of additional work happening at the state level, at the regional level, you know, things that are happening at that point in time that could align well with some of the other work that's happening. And again, the housing action plan is due at the beginning of two thousand twenty-eight, so it makes sense to look at all of those things kind of in context and make sure that we're working as a region, we're working locally with the most effective policy.
And that has been a, a typical best practice that we've seen among some of our partners that they've come back in that, knowing the timeline of development, that that five-year span really does inform you as to the actual behaviors and what you're able to achieve. But then also, is that moment in time where people come back to the table and say, okay, can you do a little bit more in terms of that set aside, or is there some room in that applicability? Because I think with the pipeline that we had going into the creation of the inclusionary housing ordinance, what we heard is that if you still want to see those smaller projects happen in the city, this will, this will just basically erase that opportunity. So that applicability, that's why we set that at five, at five plus.
I think it's kind of challenging because you don't necessarily want to best practice have an IHO that's, you know, shifting because it's really difficult to time what the market's going to do. So having one that can remain stable, that works across market conditions and doesn't get to that point where it's too high and so it takes development, as Chris mentioned earlier, is, is really a balancing act, a difficult.
I mean, what we have seems to be working, as we've heard, you know, it's more, you know, we're getting more out of it than other cities that set things a lot higher and it's kind of froze stuff. I don't think it's in the city's best interest to make things more arduous. And I was, you know, I guess the question I was like, is there something that we could reach out to, you know, developers, home builders? Is there something that would flip the switch from rental that the city could do that would switch this, flip the switch from rental to for sale? And maybe, maybe there's not, but I'm just, you know, trying to see. That's the one thing that we're looking for, our affordable for sale units, and that's kind of the uniform right now.
Yeah. Is that eighty percent AMI puts you at just what, three, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
Would going to a hundred on that make more?
Yeah, it's just really hard to build.
I think we're hearing the question, though, and we can't have those, those conversations and we're more informed and come back.
Great. I would just note before we, we leave this conversation, I mean, I think it's important for folks to know in this council to, to remember that the city of Littleton was one of the first cities in this state to come out with an inclusionary housing ordinance. So, you know, as we go through and, and fine tune it, I, I just think it's important to have that in context. And if Polis keeps removing some of our great incentives, such as the parking incentive, it makes it more challenging to come up with these incentives for, 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 for folks to actually build what we want them to build, so.
Which means that the pipeline for money coming into an affordable housing fund is going to diminish probably pretty quickly, and we might have to seek other revenue sources like a property tax to, you know, backfill that, sorry.
I look forward to that citizen. See, I look forward to you proposing that citizen initiative when you have a lot of fair, spent time.
Thank you, Julie, on that. The other, nothing else? All right, great.
Just a few citizen initiatives.
You could, yeah.
All right, moving on to finance team making their way up here.
That's the perfect citizen initiative.
Uh-oh.
Seems like only two weeks ago, we spent the day with them.
You spent the day with them?
Plans, tuition.
So, so the thing you just emailed us was, is that a two-page letter that just says in twenty different ways, we can provide our opinion on this? That was all that was. It's on the court proceedings for the.
We're, we're still in a meeting here.
Asking my lawyer, lawyer, the questions. So how do I?
I literally called you and told you. All right. Kind of a follow-up on the budget meeting from, what was that, seven weeks ago?
A week and a half?
Ten days ago.
Since then, we've found ten million dollars.
You're just full of money, aren't you?
So the council.
No, no.
Council did meet a week and a half ago to review the proposed twenty twenty-six budget, and it is a standard practice for us to allow for some time on a, you know, shortly thereafter following council meeting for budget follow-up, where we can circle back on policies and things that we heard, have anything to fill up that we need. This year, as we look through our notes, I, I know we confirmed at the end of the, the session last Saturday, two Saturdays ago, that I think we didn't have outstanding policy questions or issues, but we did still want to come back and very briefly at a high, a high-level recap for the council, what we heard, and also for the public who may not have been there, although I will thank one member of the, the public for, for being there. Thanks, Pam. And so that we can just voice some of the, the biggest trends. We have eight slides, this won't be long, but I think it's still valuable.
It was last words, Jim.
To do.
It was last words.
So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Laurie and Kevin to recap the twenty twenty-six proposed budget.
Thanks, Jim. So, as you know, my name is Kevin Orton, I'm the budget manager for the city, and I was asked to give a high-level recap of the twenty twenty-six proposed budget that we presented to city council on September thirteenth. Again, this will be a high, very high-level overview, so if there's any questions we saw on Saturday, I brought the blue book so I can answer those questions if those come up. Even since this is just a high-level recap, the full budget document is posted online either under this agenda item or on the city's budget, or on the city's webpage under the budget and finance reports, which is on the city's homepage. So if you go to littletonco.gov, finance and budget, that's where you can find the whole document if you want to see the details.
It's also in the meeting packet tonight, too, so.
Oh, it's in the meeting packet, yeah. So it's all online. The, so as a recap, the twenty twenty-six budget really addresses four goals. One is preserving service levels. With our, our revenue uncertainty, this budget was still able to preserve the same service level to the community. The second thing was supporting staffing and retention, which is in line with present, preserving service levels as we support, as the city supports staffing and retention, those service levels continue. It also enhances community engagement and communication, and it uses a healthy reserve, it maintains healthy reserves with a responsible use of fund balance. So to the numbers, the total twenty twenty-six proposed budget inclusive of inter-fund transfers is a hundred and sixty-five point seven million dollars. The budget also includes funding for three hundred and forty-seven full-time positions. Of those positions, two are new positions that are added as part of this twenty twenty-six budget. Of the hundred and sixty-five point seven million, sixty-six point one million is from the general fund. And as a reminder, the general fund is our largest fund of the city and pays for essential services such as police protection, community development, libraries, museums, administrative costs, and other services. Twenty-six point seven million is from our special revenue funds, and special revenue funds are used to track revenue that is legally or specifically restricted for a particular purpose. So this includes revenues such as the fee in lieu for affordable housing, the new marijuana tax, lodgers' tax, and the open space funds. Twenty-seven point six million is for our two capital funds, the capital projects fund and the currently named three A capital improvement projects fund. And fifty-five thousand is from the Geneva Village Fund. So little context, this fund was originally created to ensure that the restricted revenues such as rent stay in the operating costs in the Geneva Village, at Geneva Village. Now, as we're transitioning this property from a more of a property management to facility management, the twenty twenty-six budget includes spending the remaining of that money in twenty twenty-six. And then in our use, storming utility funds, we have twenty-nine point six million. And then for, finally, in our internal service funds, which are our fleet fund, employee healthcare fund, IT equipment fund, and property liability fund, a total of fifteen point seven million. So I'm, I'm going to go through this table, which is a recap of how we get from, within the general fund, from our twenty twenty-five adopted budget and how it grows into the twenty twenty-six proposed budget. Now, as a reminder, this is the largest operating fund for the city, and it funds a lot of our, the city's core services. So overall, this general fund grew from sixty-three point three million to sixty-six point one million in twenty twenty-six. And the way that grew is first, as with any budget process, we, we make a, a first-line adjustment. So that basically takes anything we added as a one-time, any mid-year adjustments made, for example, the, the amendment council approved in May for the procurement and attorney positions, we, we adjusted the budget, put that in, and, and that's, that's our first step. Next, we layered in across-the-board compensation increases and career progressions, and then we layered in increases to employee health and dental insurance increases. As healthcare increases, we also increase our budget to help pay for those. And then we adjust our salary savings. So every year we go through the budget and we look at how much is our natural attrition of salary savings. And we like to capture that in the budget so that we can allocate that to other uses. Sometimes, though, as in this year, our salary saves is actually just the other way, and so we, we lowered it a little bit in the twenty twenty-six budget based on natural attrition. And then this year, two hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand rounded up to two hundred thousand is added for our, adds dedicated resources for community engagement, which includes two FTEs, a community engagement manager and a public works communication strategist. Eighty percent of the public works communication strategist is being funded by our capital projects fund. Funding is also included in economic development. Oh, sorry, so there's also funding that's included in major projects as well, such as for one-time efforts. So once the new community engagement manager is hired, we'll reassess that one-time costs in twenty twenty-six, and that's being funded from our capital projects funds. So in an effort to grow additional revenues, there's also investment in economic development. And so the two major investments are seed funding for the Colorado Enterprise Fund, which is a one-time funding included right now to provide new businesses, a low-barrier startup loans, and also a permanent funding source for the popular open rewards program. The budget then includes increases to software such as dedicated funding for smart sheets, which is our project management tool, increases to our, year-over-year increases to workday, including new licenses for new employees, and a new police, a new police data analytics tool, and a new workday candidate messaging tool. The budget also includes money for intersection mapping and then price increases for our contracts and commodities. So I'm going to spend some time here. On Saturday, we went through more detail on each of these categories, but I just have one slide here for this, so I'm going to spend a little bit of time here. So what this is showing is our general fund financial forecast. So the city's financial policy requires us to maintain a fund balance in the general fund between eighteen percent and twenty-five percent of operating expenses. In the twenty twenty-six budget, we are aligned with this policy at twenty-five percent of fund balance to operating expenses. As we shared in May, sales and use tax collections in twenty twenty-four came in slower than expected, and because the budget was, the, the twenty-five budget was originally built on those early revenue assumptions, this created a gap now where expenses are outpacing our revenues. So for twenty twenty-six, we're recommending a temporary use of fund balance to cover the ongoing general fund expenses, and this approach will maintain service levels while we monitor the full sales tax impact of new developments coming online and, as well as evaluating the economic uncertainty that is throughout the state and also the, the country. So in short, we're using fund balance as a bridge, and this will allow us to keep operations steady until those revenues are clear. Now, keep in mind, this forecast, what it shows is our current position and our current revenue estimates based on what we know today. So if the city's revenues do not increase, the plan isn't to maintain this, this structural imbalance, we will, the city does plan on coming to city council to recommend adjustments to ensure we remain within our financial policies. So the key point here is that this is a planned and temporary use of reserves, gives us a bridge to keep services stable for our community without making cuts until we know more about this new retail revenue. So once those revenues come in, we'll be in a better position to adjust and stabilize the long-term forecast. The other thing to note on the financial forecast is in twenty twenty-seven, we've included transitioning our, currently ARPA-funded positions. So as a reminder, ARPA funds, we have to spend those by the end of twenty twenty-six. So once those run out, the plan is to transition those to the twenty, to the general fund in twenty twenty-seven. This is not a budget, so this is something that city council will be approving when they review the twenty twenty-seven budget, but we want it included in the forecast just so we knew what those costs would be and how it would look in the financial forecast. So any questions before I go on? I'm about to go on to the timeline. Okay, cool. Timeline. So we are, so this, so the budget process began in March and with city council, with the city council retreat, and now we are at the study session for September, here on September twenty-third. The first reading is scheduled for October seventh, and the second reading is scheduled for October twenty-first. As I said before, the budget is available online either on the agenda packet, it was attached to this agenda packet, it's on the agenda packet from the thirteenth, and it is, and it will be made available at the clerk's office, I think, for review, as, as required by the city charter. So I want to go over what, I want to review now what city council will be asked to consider in October. So the first thing is we'll be doing one budget ordinance this year, which will be appropriating and approving all the funds. So in the past, we've done three different ones, we've been able to combine it into one budget ordinance. The second thing we're going to be doing this year is we're going to, we're going to ask council, we're going to recommend a proactive approach, which will increase the twenty twenty-five budget, this year's budget, to align with the twenty twenty-five estimates that were included here in the budget document. Like I said, this is a proactive action that aligns the twenty twenty-five budget with the planned spending reflected in the estimates in the budget document. And what this does, it makes, it allows us so that city council doesn't have to approve a separate ordinance later in the year to increase those budgets. So this is a, this is a proactive approach we're including in the budget ordinance this year for your consideration. The other two ordinances are setting the property tax levy. So as a reminder, the city's property tax levy is two mils or two dollars for every one thousand of property tax value, or simpler, what I like to think of it is, it's just point two percent of total taxable value. And so this is the same mileage rate we've had in twenty twenty-five. And then also, city council will be considering approving the property tax levy for the Littleton Downtown Development Authority at three mils, and I believe the first reading is the same day that the LDDA is coming to council, is that right, for review? So, so you'll be doing, so first reading is that day, is the same day that the LDDA will also be presenting the budget. And then October twenty-first only will be two resolutions. One is the fiscal resolution, which you'll be hearing more about after this presentation. And then the second is renaming the three A sales, cap, sales tax capital improvement fund to just the sales tax capital improvement fund. The reason this has to come to council is because council created the fund via resolution, so in order to rename it, we have to go back to, council has to approve a resolution to rename the fund. Yeah.
I missed the, what are we increasing in the twenty twenty-five budget?
So there's four different funds, or six different funds. Oh, I didn't print it, dang it.
You could send that to me in an email.
Yeah, I will. I, I, it, it's also in the council communication.
I'll just, I'll just jump into, normally, we would come to you in December, and we would true up.
Right.
The current year budget. This year, I, I credit the team for, you know, thinking, we've done the work to, and we're confident enough with the estimates that are in the budget that we want to have that conversation with you when we consider the twenty-sixth, the next year budget, so that it, it is kind of, it is considered as, as a package, and we don't have to come back to you again.
That, that, the process seems great, and I appreciate that. I was just curious about the information.
Yeah, I could, we, we can send that out. It was also, it was six different funds, and we have the explanations for all of them.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
You said this, but I want to make sure I'm clear. So for those FTVs that are funded by ARPA, we have to look at converting them in twenty twenty-seven, is that correct? But you accounted for that in the forecast.
Yes. Yep.
As we said in the session, that will be a decision at that point, but we are wanting to be transparent about our plan, that that could, and we believe should happen, but that's going to be council's call. With the twenty-seven budget, four and a half?
Yes. Yes. Any questions, council?
Just, I'm just kidding.
I left the typo in there, see if you can find it. Any other questions?
That was a lot faster than on, on Saturday, wasn't it?
Wanted to give two.
I bet somebody else ruined us.
Yeah, they're, they're controlling.
It's happening automatically. So moving on to the fee schedule discussion.
Every year?
Jared, Jared's coming up. I didn't know if he was running out or coming up.
Every year, we adopt a master fee schedule. Um, and it's part of our practice that we have a, a study session for, for council prior to, prior to, uh, requesting your, a consideration of that, that fee schedule, so that we can talk about what's happening with the fees, any studies that we've done, any of the work that will go into the recommended fee schedule that you see. This year, we do have a few fees that we're gonna recommend for, for adjustment, but I consider them more miscellaneous as opposed to a whole series of our fees last year, like development fees, or next year's plan that you'll hear about, which is really a major update to our utility fees. So with that, I will turn it over to, uh, Lori, our finance director, who will just give a, that overview of the status of our fees and what's coming to you next.
Thank you, um, as Jim said, I'm Lori, I'm the finance director for the city. And today I'm gonna present to you our proposal for, um, our fee schedule for, um, twenty-six. I'm having a hard time with years. So, um, first I wanna look at our, um, our city revenue policy. And, um, annually, we bring before you a fee schedule. And our policy is laid out in the financial best practices that was approved by city council in two thousand and eighteen and then amended in twenty twenty-three. The policy defines the purpose of the city fees, and it's to recapture the cost of providing the services. The policy also lays out the fees, um, that are determined by regular cost of service studies and determine the full cost recovery for those services. Once the study is completed, the results are provided to council and compared to the current fee schedule and for your approval. All fees that are not included in the city code or state law are on a separate resolution that gets adopted by you each year. The latest fee schedule was adopted by city council on, um, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. And staff is currently working, as Jim mentioned, on the utility rate study with an external consultant for the wastewater and the stormwater utilities. Next, we have, um, recommended changes that we have for you. I'll quickly summarize, and then we'll go into more detail as we go on. But as I mentioned during our budget presentation, the budget does include a five percent rate increase for the wastewater utility as well as the stormwater utility. Our budget also, um, provides for an annual increase in the fee in lieu of, that you heard about for the affordable housing. Also during the budget conversations, we heard about increased, um, requests for the open records. So there's an increase in that fee as well that we'll talk about. Um, when I prepared the schedule, um, especially being new, I reached out to every department head and asked them to look at the schedule and make sure that we had everything captured, and if there's anything else that we needed to change. And quite a few departments came back with, oh, we need to update this, or we need to fix this. Good, um, so mostly little clerical errors like, um, Jim was mentioning. And then on top of that, community development is gonna propose a few more policy that I believe is gonna be presented by Jim. So next, I'll talk about the utility funds a little bit. So this next one is the wastewater utility fund that includes the five percent increase in it. We are in the process of working, we've done the RFP already to, um, have a rate study done. And we are working with them, we have our first kickoff meeting, I think it's in a couple of weeks, or next week, actually. And it's a full study on the wastewater and stormwater utility fees. The plan is to have that proposal completed by late twenty twenty-six and brought to you for approval for implementation in the twenty twenty-seven budget.
Do you know is that just the city of Littleton, or are we doing that jointly with Inglewood?
Um, our study is just ours.
Are they doing one too? Cause I know they were having issues in the past.
Yeah, um, I don't know, but this one focuses, for instance, it's separate from the South Platte renew fee studies that happen, and those do happen jointly, but we have our own, um, collection system, and the factors are different, so we, we do, um, do them separately.
Are these fees reflective on the property tax statement?
No. We bill them separately, once a year.
Don't we bill the, this and South Platte renew together?
Yes. So the study, um, will, we hope will be completed, but until then, we're gonna, we've recommended the increase of five percent for this year to keep the fund stable. For the twenty twenty-six budget year, we have twenty-six point two million dollars in expenses, ten point one million for capital outlay and fourteen point five million in operating, um, with only one point six million dollars towards, um, personnel services. The annual rate for a single-family dwelling is proposed to be three hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-seven cents. That's a seventeen dollar and seventeen cent increase annually. Uh, for multifamily, the proposed rate is two hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-six cents. That's a thirteen dollar and three cent annual increase.
And those revenues and fees, will that equal the twenty-six point two million in expenditure? I mean, I know it says expenditures, but the fees are the revenues.
Yes, and the fees, that these funds are in balance. So next is our storm drainage fund, and likewise, this one includes a five percent increase as well in the budget. The fund is projected for three point four million dollars of expenditures, with seven hundred thousand of that for personnel services, one million for operating, and one point five million in capital outlay. Additionally, includes a two hundred and twenty-five thousand repayment of the inter-fund loan from the wastewater utility fund, and like Kevin had mentioned in the budget, that's the previous loan, not the new one. Um, so the five percent increase would raise the annual single-family rate to a hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents, which, a year, which is a five dollar and ninety-three cent increase. Um, the total for wastewater and storm drainage for a single-family unit would be a total annual increase of twenty-three dollars and ten cents. Next is the affordable housing fund. Um, so as you heard earlier, we have an inclusionary housing ordinance where it provides for a fee in lieu for the developers to pay. Um, and I believe she also mentioned the CPI. Um, it's based on the CPI for the Denver area, which has increased two point three percent. Therefore, we are recommending a two point three percent increase in that fee. So the other fees that, um, were requested to, in, in, some of them are increases, some are decreases, and some are corrections, and I've tried to lay them all out here, not make it too complicated. Um, it's also on the red line version that I provided in the packet as well. Um, so some of the things they wanted to update, um, the city clerk requested that we update the open records fee that we charge, the first hour's free. The second hour, she's recommending that we go to forty dollars, it's currently thirty-three. The state sets that rate for, um, puts a maximum out there. The state's maximum for this coming year is forty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Previously, the state's maximum was thirty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. So we're recommending only going to forty, we stay close to the state maximum, but not at it. Um, so, and to date, so you can understand how many record requests the clerk has, um, we've processed two hundred and twenty-five of those requests so far this year. Um, and of those, thirty-three have required extension letters because they couldn't be fulfilled within the three-day limit, I believe, is what the state law asked for. And it's been an additional hundred and twenty hours of time. How many requests? Um, she had told me that this exceeded last year's request, but I don't have the number off the top of my head. Um, so then there was also, so that was the increase in the records fee. Um, the police research fee was twenty-five dollars an hour, and I had said to him, I said, well, do you wanna go to the same number that, that open records is? Cause it's the same kinda thing, it's a first hour's free, and then after that, they charge. So he's increasing that as well. He had originally requested to increase it to thirty-three, and that I don't think he realized that we were gonna increase the open records one. So he agreed to that. Um, the addressing fee is community development has requested a change in that structure. So it's a scale that depending on how many addresses they request to be changed, it increased, there's a fee for that. And that's laid on, on the schedule as well. Then there's, um, decreases of fees. Um, community development requested for decreases in fees that you can see listed up there. Um, and they felt that the new structure and the new fee would encourage compliance. And then there was a couple of corrections. Um, my understanding is that grading permit schedule, um, scale that was on there was accidentally left off a couple of years ago and never got put back on. So it hasn't changed any, it's the same as it was, I think, in twenty-two, but it's back on the schedule. The library, um, making copies for people when they come in and printing, we just never had it on the schedule, it's twenty-five cents. Um, so we're putting that on there. Police department requested to remove the fingerprinting fee, um, and then the data retrieval fee that the police recommended. Next.
I can jump in for this one.
Yep, next is.
It's a common practice among, uh, government a- agencies within a, you know, local area, um, to waive fees for each other, especially, you know, cities for, uh, land use under the, uh, theory that, you know, we're all kind of serving the same taxpayers and we're, we're, you know, trying to save those, those costs and keep them for the main purposes that they were paid. Littleton has the practice over years, from what I have, have learned and have seen in the time that I've been here, of also extending this, uh, courtesy and this, this practice. Um, we haven't had many, um, applications for land use. This would apply to, uh, development fees and that we would, uh, waive those fees for our governmental partners. Um, haven't had many for most of these, uh, agencies in the, in the, the last few years. I think it's a, it's something I've wanted to bring to council so that we can actually just have a public, uh, discussion about it. And, um, and I'd like to kinda codify, although it wouldn't be in the code, you know, put this for, more formally in a policy, uh, so that we can all kind of know what we're doing when we get these requests. The one, uh, the one a- agency here that does have some significant dollars associated with, associated with it is the one at the top of the list, which is South Metro Housing Options. Um, that's one that we have had a couple of requests on over the past couple of years. Um, as we've done the research, I know that, you know, even as they, uh, came forward to the city in, I think, twenty nineteen or, or twenty twenty for the, um, overlook property that has opened, the city also had been paying, had been, uh, waiving their fees then, especially given this council's high priority for, uh, affordable housing and the, um, assistance that the city has given through the IHO funds. Uh, we thought it was important that we also, uh, assist in a similar way with their, their land, their development fees. Um, so we have done that for the, um, property that just broke ground. Yes, yeah, Montv Flats. Um, so, you know, I think that you're very, again, uh, confident bringing it to you as it is, um, consistent with that high priority for council, but I would just like some, uh, discussion of it, that the dollars can be large, um, for those, those fees. Um, I know Jared might be able to, to speak to it, but the number that I heard was that they, they can be, you know, approaching a half million dollars total spread across a number of funds when you look at the, kind of, general fund fees for development, uh, development review, plus some of the infrastructure, um, funds too. So we certainly view those as in-kind contributions to, um, affordable housing, and that's the way that we would encourage, you know, council to look at, at those. But I, I did, I do wanna highlight those, um, those needs, and you can see what those kinda policy points are that are in the policy that's in your packet. Um, I'd love to hear some conversation on that. If there's support, we'll bring that back to you for council's adoption, um, with the fee schedule.
When would, when would the city go to South Metro Housing or South Suburban Parks for?
We, yeah, when we go, when we do, we don't, you know, it's, it's cities that are, that waive the, uh, the, the development fees for their, their government partners.
Yeah.
You know, I'll say we are exploring some options for, uh, potentially sharing workspace with South Metro Housing Options. I think there, there are ways that we can work with these partners, um, that would show some, you know, uh, cooperation back to the city, um, for some of these, these, these fees when they, they come. Um, so those, those, uh, conversations are happening. But it's just, I think, trying to help each other in the ways that are most needed at the right time. Um, I, I know how important those, uh, development fees, you know, waiver has been to South Metro Housing Options. Um, so that is the one that has the hi- higher dollars. I will point out, and I would, I would, I would appreciate some council direction on this too, that if we do that, especially since we know we're gonna have another nonprofit agency bringing forward some, um, you know, deeded affordable housing, if that's the one that's not addressed in this policy, but it occurs to me that, that council may, if, may want to waive fees under that circumstance, nonprofit and, um, deeded affordable properties, um, again, in service of that affordable housing priority. So, um, we might wanna get through, through the re- rest of the slides here, but I would love, I would like council's thoughts on this.
Oh, you wanna finish this, do you wanna do this now, or do you wanna?
I think we just have.
So next, um, it's really what are the next steps? So the next steps would be, um, staff is gonna complete that utility rate study for implementation with twenty twenty-seventh's budget. Um, staff and community development is also gonna be reviewing their permit fees in this coming year. And then the city fi, citywide fee review will be incorporated in the annual budget process again next year. And then lastly, it's what are your options? So one, we'll be bringing this to you for approval, actually, um, at October twenty-first session with the budget, with the second reading. But you would have the option then to maintain the current fee schedule without any adjustments. You could adj, um, accept our proposal to adjust the fees the way we're recommending, or you, we could consider alternatives at your recommendation. It's at your discretion. And then lastly is questions.
Questions on the fee schedule first.
So it makes sense to have a good relationship with partners and, you know, how it's affordable housing. What would be the downside?
Fee schedule first, not the, the change of policy.
Not the policy.
Oh, sorry.
No discussion, I'm good.
And because I was going quickly, I would just remind council that the purpose of the fees is to offset the cost of providing the services. Not a way to raise revenue, but to.
So to answer the previous question, slides question, to accept the fees recommendations, or staff's recommendations of fees, okay? Now to the policy of a fee waiver.
Okay, so in essence, we're subsidizing the fees for the partners.
Bring that slide back.
Correct, there is a down, it, there's other downsides I'm not seeing. So we're subsidizing the fees for like South Metro Housing.
Correct.
Is there any other downside to it? I mean. I mean, we're absorbing the cost, but is there any?
Those would be revenues to the city to help pay for services, right? And those are spread out across funds.
Well, I, yeah, so I, I'm, thank you for that clarification. I think it's a, a good idea. I think. Um, I think it would be valuable to add, um, I mean, South Metro Housing is, we support it because it fits with our city. Our policy to try to ex- expand housing options. And we learned from our prior presentation that there's this. Maybe this nonprofit Grove that is going to be expanding or maintaining housing. And that may require some fees for that twenty-five million dollar reinvestment, so I would be interested in, you know, fee waivers. You know, our policy being explicit that we have fee waivers for, um, you know, organizations that are doing. Deeded um, uh, affordable housing.
I agree.
I like, I'll get a case by case as it comes available. Look, let's see what those fees are, what we're waiving. Some of those can be a pretty big number, so I'd like to look at case by case.
I think for, at least for that, I think when you, I mean, these are all government or quasi-government entities. We start opening up to nonprofits, then I think it gets a little squishy with what, who can apply and what that, and so I. I would prefer to keep it at this right now and not open up to nonprofits because, you know, you can set up some organization, you know. Private business, if it's deeded, then you, then you define line, oh, there's a private company that's doing something that's deeded there. So I'm not, I'm not in support of that right now. The questions I have for this is two questions. One. Um, since we're looking at our government partners, I don't know why the DDA would apply. And have any fees, but they are, are one of our authorities, just like South Metro Housing. Would they qualify to be on this? Would that make sense? If they may not even apply for anything that would require a fee, but I don't know. And then I guess the other question is, does South Suburban and South Metro Fire uh waive fees? For the city for things that we go to them?
Any of these waive fees for the city? I I don't know. That's what I was trying to get, ask Jim is, wouldn't any of these waive fees for us?
I mean, South Metro wouldn't because we wouldn't, but the only ones that would would be South Suburban and South Metro Fire, not South Metro Housing Options.
Give me an example on South Suburban, something recently that we're doing that.
Go and rent a park for an event, I mean, do we, is there a fee for Hudson Gardens? Yeah, if we go, so.
The city would go rent, okay.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, that's, that's a little different than a fee, that's actual, I don't, but something like that.
As an FR would be like inspections or other kind of COVID lines.
For fireworks, the city puts on, are they waiving the inspection fee for the fireworks? That's, that, those are things, so.
Confirm that they are, but I believe.
Okay.
But I, I will check when we, when we bring this back.
I just want this to be mutually beneficial, not one way, a strong suggestion, because we're very happy to waive fees.
Which we have with uh with South Suburban. That's a conversation I've already started with.
I agree on that. I don't think we should open it up to nonprofits. I thought Robert was saying, if we just kind of set a policy. Anyone who is under that policy for housing stuff, would that be seen the same as South Metro?
The, I think it's organizations that are expanding uh or maintaining affordable housing in the city. That it's, that affordable housing is deeded and that the organization is a nonprofit.
So I think that, no, that's, I mean, I IHO is already providing, so any, anyone that comes and develop, build affordable housing, we're not waiving those fees. I mean, the, the, we're getting, that's, we're collecting fees on that, so I'm not supportive of.
This is not about.
Exactly. That's a, well, we're still, there's still review fees. I mean, if you have a development comes in, there's hundreds of, I mean.
Yeah, no, it's not, you're right, I'm, I'm, it would be for th- for things that are, for the whole, where the whole development is affordable.
Now, you were the budget hawk during the discussion, and now you're giving away money.
That's true, it's true.
So I, I would, if we go down this road, I'd like to see us cap it at something. To give away a half a million per project or a million, whatever that is, impact fees and all the other fees added together, as you said, across all, all channels. I mean, those are big numbers, and that's just one project.
And the idea this came from is because these are government, these are tax entities, taxing entities, and it's doubling up, saying the tax dollars going to this. So that's where this whole thing can come, not just as an affordable housing policy. So I, I think I'm pretty firm, like, we need to keep it to. Our tax collecting um and government entities.
That makes sense.
South Metro Housing's not a tax.
And government entities.
Quasi-governmental.
Yep.
So where, where does Habitat fit in there? Where they're a tool of South Metro Housing for, for building of, and selling affordable housing. They're the only tool for kind of building and selling affordable housing in the Denver metro area.
I think that's where we have our discussion with our IHO funds, but as far as our development fee waivers, I don't think that fits in there.
So, I mean, South Metro Housing is Littleton's, it's the Littleton Housing Authority. It's just changed its name to make it seem like it's something different than our housing.
It's technically a nonprofit.
It's like part of the city.
Correct, correct, technically it's part of the city. I mean.
It's a muddy relationship.
What happens if you throw dirt in the air?
There are, there are housing authorities across the, the state where council actually asks, acts as. The board members.
That's not our relationship with this one.
Jim, this sounds like it just needs a little clarification as to what they're waiving for us, or if they're in, in agreeing. And what exactly have they waived, you know, what, what fees are they waiving for us? And, and then maybe come back with some numbers on just a generic, you know. Twenty million dollar project, what are our total fees in? You know, what, what's, what's the um. Montview Flats, what's, that product's about twenty million, is that about right? Eighteen million? That's okay. When, when we're talking development fees, they wouldn't be waiving those, but. Because they're, we don't, we don't pay them fees. Um, but they are. But this is an impact fees? What are, what are these fees that you're talking about waiving? Development fees, uh, plan review, building permit fees. Up there, are they up there? Yeah, and then as the, the last uh bullet says, that the state allows for. Affordable housing impact fees, but that's the only case for waiving impact fee.
I think from a policy level, to your point, Patrick, like, you're right, like, we're kind of talking about numbers that we don't quite fully comprehend. It might just be worth bringing the question to council upon affordable housing projects getting proposed. What the, the actual total fees and structure would look like.
Yeah, keep track. The idea with South Metro Housing Options is, if we can save the money, they just keep coming to us and asking for money, and we keep giving them money. So it's kind of, I mean, what, can we save them money on waiving fees, or are we gonna charge them fees? And then they come and say, can you give us another million dollars?
Right, exactly.
That's what, that's where this whole thing came from.
And what would be the simplest way to do it too, right?
I'll say that uh, that's, uh, sometimes there is a administrative efficiency question here. They are. Trying to move on finalizing things. They have plans and they, so um, we could, I think, go that direction. But um, there's been, you know, requests for, um, you know. Uh, for expedited action in the past, so I, I, I think it. Um, that's why it's helpful to have the policy if it is something that's very consistent with council's pol- um. Priorities, um, you know, I'd, if you're comfortable with this, which I, you know, not seen yet as a, a body. Um, that's why I, I'd like this to be as a, a policy so that we can move, it can be predictable for them. Because they will always, you know, as, as we, as, as we, we know with these deals, when they're, they're tight, they are, they would like to be able to. Um, to know that this is additional support from the city that they can build into their project.
I'll at least clarify on behalf of myself, I think the list you have up there is good. I think it is in addition to. The list that you have up there with regards to affordable housing projects, it's at least worth a consideration, but not.
I, I think we're mixing things, because of SHMO, which is kind of different than the rest of the um entities here. We're mixing deeded housing with ta- saving taxpayer dollars. I think.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to add mix those things, that's exactly right.
You're trying to broaden.
I'm trying to broaden.
South Metro Housing Options is the one that has real consequence right now, and, you know, these other uh agencies are, are more sporadic. In terms of their needs for development services, so I'd like to have some policy for them so that we don't bring smaller things to you. I, you know, we acknowledge that South Metro Housing Options is the, the, the largest. And I don't know that we would even bring that forward for your consideration if it wasn't such a high priority that we're already s- supporting financially. I, I think do- doing it this way is, you know, we'd be acknowledging additional support for. You know, SMHO's projects, we would report that to you, um, but it's something that could be counted on in. Proformas and projects, and um, there wouldn't be the question as they're planning. Um, but I recognize if, you know, council's not, not comfortable, we can do it a different way.
I'm very comfortable with, with this up there. I, I absolutely one hundred percent want to continue to support South Metro Housing Options. With fee waivers that we just went over. There's zero percent doubt in my mind about that.
I, I agree. I agree too, but I feel like by your argument just now, Grove would, even though they're a one-off, potentially still could be part of that conversation, but.
I don't think it's part of this. I think it's, I think this is a, you know, a governmental entity. I think we can talk about that, you know, as part of, I think. Fee waiver maybe could be a discussion in your twenty twenty-seven review of the IHO of incentives for affordable housing.
Well, I would like, if, if they're investing twenty-five million dollars in sustaining um affordable housing in. Littleton next year, I would like to have a conversation about them before twenty twenty-seven.
Me too.
I'm interested in that conversation, but like, at least for the question before, is this list here, is I'm in support of?
I agree.
I'm also interested in somebody else.
Your opinion is not germane to that.
This short timer status, are we?
Still have an opinion about it right now. I think a council should deliberate in the future.
To, to, I'm seeing support to bring this back to you.
Correct. As, as presented, yes.
But I would, I would also.
The policy that's drafted, attached to the agenda item tonight, these are bullet points, this, these two slides.
Right, so are you bringing back just this list or something in addition?
There's a two-page policy.
My expansion got shot down.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just the two-page policy.
I would check, I would check uh council's support for the LDDA being included in the policy.
I'm not recom- I'm recommending, I'm just asking if it would make sense for them, considering that they are also a.
At some point in the future, they may.
I do appre- I appreciate Patrick's question of kind of what are the reciprocal relationships, and when it comes before us, that a. I would love to have that information when we formally discuss it. I'm, I'm, I'm curious about it.
Just, just, tell, you know, now that I saw that list of fees, you're right, without the impact fees, then it's probably not that big of a, big of a ask or a big of a giveaway, I guess.
Reed, is it a big give it all, big giveaway?
Are we giving away legal services too?
I mean, that's the investment that council has asked the city to make in terms of affordable housing and projects. That's the cost of doing this.
Well, maybe we just shrink it down to that. But let's, let's find out. Let's hear the rest of the story.
Well.
Hear your presentation. Of course. Yes, I, I think there isn't a reciprocal for South Metro Housing Options. No, I understand that. No, I'm, I'm okay with that. Same for. The others, we can check just, yeah, it's been a while since we've waived, we've waived fees for them, but I will confirm what I understand. Yeah.
Yeah, it feels like the key one is South Suburban and South Metro Fire.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those feel like the.
But right now, we're just gonna keep the list.
Right, my, right.
Okay, probably good now?
Yeah, thank you.
We're very good.
Great, all right. Uh, any update from council members?
Joel and I have a meeting Saturday.
That's true.
At the library.
Thanks for the light.
No, with the citizens.
Yes, and, and the elevator is fixed.
That's wonderful.
It is?
Oh, yeah.
Yay.
Because of Joel and I's.
Some people with some sway.
Wait, I actually do have something. I thought, is this where I should bring up if I would like to talk about the structure around ADUs? To ask that to the other agenda in the future? I told you I was gonna do that.
I'll answer on Jim's behalf. Talk with staff and finalize it.
What about ADUs?
Normally, yeah.
Not allowed in the city. They're not allowed in the city.
So why don't we? Um, I'd, I'd like to be able to inform council's, you know, discussion with what that might take. Um, so, if you're interested, we can, we can, we can bring that back to you.
Yeah, I would be, I would be interested in that.
Well, what about fees? Are, are we not discussing?
She just wanted to know if council wanted to have further discussion on fees specific.
Specific to ADUs.
I do.
For building them?
Yeah.
Correct.
For building them.
Because we've said they're illegal, but at this point, I think they're too expensive to actually build because they're viewed as a single family house as far as impact fees go.
Correct.
Because you're proportionate, yeah.
I get more incentivized in the type of.
I get it, okay. Now I understand, it's a second idea.
I'm seeing interest, I'm seeing curiosity enough for us to.
Cost recovery of this piece. Don't do one of those studies again.
All right, the only thing I have is just everyone on the longer tables, uh, event tomorrow night.
Is it gonna rip?
No.
So?
What time should we get their mic?
Doors open at five o'clock. Food's at six, yep.
It's Mike's, it's Mike's birthday tomorrow.
It is Mike's birthday.
Have a Mike a birthday party!
It's kind of perfect for Mike.
Years old, it's not as fun as sixty, let me tell you right now.
All right, city attorney?
Yeah, I do have a, just an update, so. Council is aware that on the fifth of September, the city filed a petition with the court. To get a finding made by the court regarding the ballot question three A. As part of that process, as part of the state statute, the petitioners in this case. Um, which would be, for the most part, the rooted in Littleton group, has a statutory right to what's called intervene. I E. File whatever they need to file in support of, of the ballot question. Um, they had, they were invited to do so, they are allowed to do so, they have elected to do so, so they retain counsel. Who did file their motion, their unopposed motion to intervene, uh, I want to say yesterday. Um, and so they'll be able to, to file any supportive briefs that they, that they want. Um, and hopefully help the court in making a decision. I don't have a timeline in terms of when the court would make a ruling on that. Um, I think the plan is to, to meet with that group, uh, that group's attorneys. And talk about perhaps a briefing schedule, um, and how we'll roll this out for the court. Uh, this is a matter of first impression for the court. All courts, no one has filed under this particular section, so. It'll be a little bit of a, a feeling out, um, in terms of the process, but I trust it will go smoothly.
And is the judge that's been assigned someone who's kind of familiar with housing policy?
They are amazing.
Yeah, I assume that's the correct response from our council, so thank you, they're amazing.
I'm very happy.
I have two questions. The first, to clarify that, the city did not sue any private citizens.
The city has not sued any private citizens.
Or nonprofit organizations.
Correct, there, there is no, you know, adverse party in this particular, particular uh filing.
Okay.
A petition to ask the court to take a look at the language, make sure that it's not in violation of state law. That's all it is. And as a right, whoever came up with the petition has a right to quote-unquote intervene, which is to file any supportive. Documents that they want to file. So that's what we're doing.
And then my second question is, question three A, will be on the ballot, ballots are being printed, are gonna be sent out, so it's going to be on the ballot. Correct, there is the city, no matter what, it's going to be on the ballot.
Let me ask a follow-up question to that. If, if, if the judge rules that as unconstitutional, we know it's gonna be on the ballot, will it be counted?
I mean, we'll, we'll count the ballot, just how we apply that, uh, that charter provision will be another.
Either way, it's counted.
Counted as the, the vote, or tallied.
The votes are tallied. Whether it goes into effect depends on what the judge says.
No.
I mean, I think that's more complicated.
But it, but it will be on the ballot.
Yes, it's already on the ballot.
Disruption.
Yes.
Council has given direction, there is.
Tally.
Zero on ten, there is zero one, two. Zero intent, there is zero want to.
Stop this from being on the ballot, so we are going to proceed and make sure that it appears on the ballot.
This government poll shuts it down.
I don't think he can do that. Nothing, nothing from the city manager, all right, we're adjourned.